Good evening, West Orange. And good evening, residents. Thank you for being here to our conference agenda on March 19th, 2019. We have a special event tonight, something that's very close to my heart and something that's very close to many people's heart. And I'd like to have the Fire Chief of the West Orange Fire Department and the Honor Color Guard come up, and let's start our promotional service.
Jerry.
Sorry, Chief. Not to interrupt, but we have to make public comment before we start. Madam Clerk?
No, no, no. Open the meeting.
We'll have to open the meeting. But... Thank you.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4th, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Corino?
Present.
Mayor Parisi.
Okay, Chief. I can ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let them get out. Okay, everyone, please be seated. On behalf of the Fire Department, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight, and I'd like to give a special thank you to our council for allowing us to be here tonight to do what we look forward to as often as we can, and that's to promote some of our members. I'd like to give a special thank you to Council President. We spoke. I know this is a special meeting, and we appreciate the time at the beginning, so thank you very much. Thank you also to our Honor Guard who brought us in today, and thank you to Mickey Wagner, for those of you who know, is our office assistant at the Fire Department, and she prepares us for today, so we appreciate everything she does. I've said it before, people don't necessarily get promoted for doing their jobs well, but rather they get promoted by demonstrating their potential to do so. Gabe Gatto and Frank Nobrini are two men who have been demonstrating their potential from the day they were first sworn into as firefighters. So their promotional exams rankings of 1 and 2 respectively was of little surprise to anyone. You can read more about both of them in the programs that were handed out. If I can call on firefighter Gatto to come up. Firefighter Gatto has risen to the occasion with anything he's been asked to do on and off duty. His willingness to make our agency better is infectious. Most recently, Gabe has spearheaded our community EMS and CPR program, coordinating free training to residents and community groups. I've received a great number of written accolades from residents about his kindness and patience during the classes. Gabe represents the township of West Orange with a professionalism that makes his peers and certainly this chief very proud to be here today, recognizing him publicly. If I can ask the mayor to come up? And whoever you'd like to have pin your badge on.
Repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of the office of fire captain according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Gabe. If I can ask firefighter Nobrini to come on down. Firefighter Frank Nobrini is also a man of true character. He was pegged as a leader from his first day as a recruit. Frank wasted no time and took a leadership role in the firefighters' union, always representing his coworkers with dignity and compassion. Complaining about the daily operational challenges to a fire department is all too common in the fire service. However, Frank has always been the one to offer prospective solutions to any issue. To that end, he was instrumental in lobbying for a new fire apparatus, and in standard Frank style, once the funds were allocated, he stepped up and volunteered his time to help design a well-equipped and well-suited engine, too, which we took delivery of last spring.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of the office of fire captain according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Frank. And Mayor Parisi, thank you, as always, for your support and for being with us here today. We've made it a tradition over the years, I don't really know where it started, but it is, as an appreciation for putting up with our heightened stress levels to our exam and promotion process. Most of you don't know, but it's a very stressful time for us when we try to reach another rank, and our families sometimes suffer a bit, so what we'd like to do is, if I could, if we can call up Gabe's girlfriend, Melissa Delmoreau, and Frank's wife, Amanda Nobrini, we have some flowers, just as a way to say thank you. Congratulations, Gabe. If I can ask firefighter Nobrini to come on down. Firefighter Frank Nobrini is also a man of true character. He was pegged as a leader from his first day as a recruit. Frank wasted no time and took a leadership role in the firefighters' union, always representing his coworkers with dignity and compassion. Complaining about the daily operational challenges to a fire department is all too common in the fire service. However, Frank has always been the one to offer prospective solutions to any issue. To that end, he was instrumental in lobbying for a new fire apparatus, and in standard Frank's style, once the funds were allocated, he stepped up and volunteered his time to help design a well-equipped and well-suited engine, too, which we took delivery of last spring.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of the office of fire captain according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Frank. And Mayor Parisi, thank you, as always, for your support and for being with us here today. We've made it a tradition over the years, I don't really know where it started, but it is, as an appreciation for putting up with our heightened stress levels to our exam and promotion process. Most of you don't know, but it's a very stressful time for us when we try to reach another rank, and our families sometimes suffer a bit, so what we'd like to do is, if I could, if we can call up Gabe's girlfriend, Melissa Delmoreau, and Frank's wife, Amanda Nobrini, we have some flowers, just as a way to say thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Congratulations, Gabe and Frank, and once again, thank you to the council for letting us do our thing here, so thanks. Before we go, Chief, thank you, and thank you to the men and women of the West Orange Fire Department for the great service they do for the residents of the township of West Orange. Congratulations to our two new captains. May you always have safe tours, and thank you very much, and have a great evening. Moving right along. Redevelopment. Mr. Sayers, any updates on redevelopment?
Yes. Same thing. Like I said, they're moving right along with everything on Main Street. I did get a call yesterday, not yesterday, the beginning of the week, regarding them going into DPW and looking at DPW and seeing what they need to do to start Phase 2. So I had discussed that with one of the individuals from Prism, and I hooked them up with Mr. Lapore, and he is working with them to see what they need to get done.
Anything on Phase 2, Mr. Sayers?
What's that?
Anything on Phase 2?
Well, that's, the individual who spoke to me yesterday is working with Lanny to discuss exactly what they need to do with regard to environmental issues and other things with DPW before they can start Phase 2.
Okay, thank you. And of course, there's a big milestone yesterday or the other day over the weekend, they rented their 100 unit.
What's that?
They rented their 100 unit.
Actually, they're over 100 units right now. There are about 105 or 109, I believe.
It's good to hear that.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Sayers. Any of my colleagues have any questions for the administration on redevelopment? Councilman Kukoviac?
If I could, Mr. Sayers, is there anything new on the filings with the planning department that we're supposed to be in, I guess, back in September?
No, but they are starting their Phase 2, to put together Phase 2. It's not completed yet. I tried to reach out to Mr. Diaz, but he's out of the country. He will not be back till next week, so when I talk to him, I'll find out exactly when it's gonna happen.
Thank you.
Any of my other colleagues, any questions? Okay, that's moving right along. Let's move over to liaison announcements. Councilman Kukoviac?
You'll have to forgive me, I'm not ready to speak at this point.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Sure. Okay, in regards to senior programming, we've added this spring bingo at the Toby Cat Civic Center from 11 and 2 on Mondays. That will run from March until February of next year. Anyone interested, please go on the website or Community Pass, or you can call the Senior Services number at 973-325-4105. I'd like to thank the administration for the launch of the new website. If you haven't had the opportunity yet, we have a brand-new website online. I'd like to thank Sherri Cork, she's working out all the kinks for us, and it really has a very nice design, much more user-friendly, so I'd just like to thank the administration, great job on that. Spring is coming, and one of my pet peeves in town is seeing garbage litter all over the township. We have many wastepaper baskets that say the love sign and "Love West Orange," so we're looking forward to working with some community groups on some cleanup projects this spring, so it doesn't take much. If you see any litter out on your curve, please clean up. We're very proud of our township, and now that the winter months are rolling by, hopefully we could see some green grass without litter on it on the sidelines. And Mr. Sayers, if you could just make another call to the state, please, because again, the entrance ramps are getting kind of cluttered again, same thing with the county road. I know we've had some snow and late snowstorms, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also on Sunday, April 7th, is West Orange Shreddage Day at the Environmental Center, so any shredding that you may have, you could bring it up, and the township will dispose of it for you. And I just want to congratulate our two new fire captains, Captain Gato and Captain Nobrini. Both West Orange alumni, it's always great to see our alumni grow and stay within our township and give back to our community. Frank was a student of Roosevelt Middle School, later the high school. Frank also graduated West Orange High School and longtime PAL coach, so thank both of them for the great job they do for the community as well as all our firemen, and it was just really nice and touching to see our students grow up and become protectors of our township, so thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
None for me.
Okay, Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. So we'll start with the West Orange Arts Council. The Arts Center has the West Orange High School Advanced Placement Art Student Exhibit up till this weekend, March 24th. Everyone's invited to attend, it's really outstanding work there. The Environmental Commission invites everyone, or asks everyone, to participate in Earth Hour. So I register the town every year with this global phenomenon that crosses thousands of cities in 187 countries, asking everyone to turn their lights out just for one hour, lights and all electronics from 8:30 to 9:30 p.m., and if you go to earthhour.org, you see the globe go dark for that one hour. Considering the panoramic views we have here, it's really amazing to see. So we invite everyone to participate, just sending out that symbolic message to conserve energy and conserve tax dollars, to conserve our environment. I would also like to ask everyone to save the date of May 13th. The West Orange Chamber of Commerce will hold their annual community awards dinner, where we will recognize and honor Police Department, the Fire Department, and Educator of the Year. So the date is May 13th, the Monday evening, and the Business of the Year. May Fair Farms is the Business of the Year. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilwoman. I'll let you go last, okay? I'd like to bring up, we had a great meeting this past week for the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. The high school students that are on our advisory board gave a fantastic evaluation and analysis and presentation of crash data. They made a wonderful presentation. I wish more people were there to see it, but they're really digging in deep to the data, and they're being big assets for our board and for what we plan to do in the coming months for pedestrian safety, particularly with our road diet on Main Street and other things throughout the township. Speaking of pedestrian safety, I had the privilege of going to a town hall meeting in Maplewood on this past Saturday and bringing up the issue to former Governor Cody, Assemblyman McKeon, and Assemblywoman Myla Jacy about finding additional avenues of funding to enhance our traffic enforcement. As I've always said, and as we've proven in our data, you can have all the traffic safety signs and lights and road improvements all over, but without enforcement, they mean nothing. And I asked the governor and the assembly people to find ways how the township and other townships can keep more revenue to support our Traffic Enforcement Bureau through the tickets, because, you know, I get many letters, or many people say to me, "Jerry, why don't you just have the police department write more tickets? You generate revenue." Well, it doesn't work that way. We do not keep those revenues. We get a small percentage of it, especially when it's a county road. A county road, we have to share with the county, so we keep very little of the money. The legislation and laws need to be changed to allocate more money back to the municipalities to support our traffic enforcement. And speaking of traffic enforcement, over the past couple of years, due to the work of the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, the crash data stats in West Orange have gone down by 17%, which is the highest in the county, to be reduced, and something that we're very proud of. The only negative to that is that SS County has the highest pedestrian fatality rate in the state of New Jersey, and we need to work on that work with the county, as we have. We've built a good partnership with the county to improve our pedestrian safety, and there's more to come. Keep your eyes out on the township website with the Downtown Alliance, a lot of great things coming. You know, our street fair will be coming up, you know, June will be just around the corner, so there are a lot of great things, a lot of new restaurants and bakeries and stores opening within the downtown corridor, and we'd like that you go patronize them, because there's some wonderful products, and many of these new owners are residents who are investing within the community, and it's a good thing, and introduce yourself. Let them realize that the investment they made is very, very important. And at the end, I'd like to just congratulate our two new captains of the Fire Department and to wish them many happy and safe tours, and to thank the men and women of the West Orange Fire Department for the great job they do for the township of West Orange. Thank you, Chief, to you and your personnel. Councilman Kukoviac?
I'm sorry, I still haven't found my notes, so please just move ahead.
Okay. Sure, Councilwoman McCartney would like to add something?
We can't start our public meeting until 7 o'clock, but my council colleague, Michelle Castellino, had just mentioned about the new town website, and just talking about, from the Environmental Commission, I also wanted to mention that we implemented a new asset for the town called Recycle Coach, because the recycling laws have changed throughout the state of New Jersey, and all the information is right there on the website, so Recycle Coach.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
That's all I have.
Let's see, can I think of something? I think I can.
Okay. You want to have one more announcement?
Yes, Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah, I remiss in my prior statements, and the first weekend in May, the Friends of the West Orange Public Library will be having an annual book and plant sale, so it's the weekend right before Mother's Day. So if you have plans on buying plants for Mother's Day, it's a great opportunity to come down to West Orange Public Library to get your Mother's Day plants, so I just wanted to put a little plug in there.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, anybody have a good joke? The West Orange Chamber? No, this is not a joke. This is, the West Orange Chamber was invited this morning, or members of the West Orange Chamber attended a meeting at West Orange High School on the VEI program, Virtual Entrepreneurs, and this is a course, newly implemented course at the high school for students to create a business plan. Amazing, again, amazing high school students. They came in first place at Fair, came in third place in a nationwide competition, and there's another one coming up in April. So any business owners that would like to help develop, help the students develop their plan, they're doing a great job, contact the high school, the VEI program.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Seconds away.
No more, no more.
Plenty more going on.
No, it's okay. Okay, 7 o'clock. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4th, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Corino?
Present.
Mayor Parisi?
Present. Okay. Now I'd like to open the floor to public comment, so anyone wishing to speak to the Township Council, please raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Please come up to the microphone, and please state your name and your address clearly and loudly, so the municipal clerk can get the information and the council members can get your name. Is there anybody wishing to speak to the council? Yes, sir?
Mr. President, just so we're clear here, are you holding public comment on the ordinance on second reading till that point?
Yes.
Okay, so this is everything except comment on the Rock Spring bond ordinance?
Right, this is, I'm sorry, I meant to say, this is only public comment for everything excluding the Rock Spring resolution ordinance.
My name's Dave QB. I'm the Director of the West Orange Public Library, and on behalf of the board and the staff at the library, we'd like to express that we greatly appreciate the public interest in the community support of the library, and we look forward to the studies that are being done and the opportunity for the public input, once all options have been clarified. I have some other interests that I would like to discuss. At the state level, a very important thing that we would appreciate council support on is that this year, the legislative priority for the New Jersey Library Association is restoration of the per capita library aid, which was cut in half in 2010 and has remained flat-funded since then. Currently, for all the public libraries in the state of New Jersey, it's 3.67 million, and we are asking for the support for public libraries to be increased to 10.5 million across the state. That is currently sponsored by Assemblywoman Jacy, Assemblyman McKeon, and Senator Cody, so we thank you very much for that. And while I also have you here, I'd like to let you know about some of the great programs that are happening at the library the remainder of this month. On Sunday, March 24th, at 2:00 p.m., there will be a book talk with local author Barbara Kukla on her book on the Newark Suffragettes, and that's at 2:00 p.m. If you could please come out to that, that'd be awesome. Friday, March 22nd, from 3:30 to 4:30 p.m., our Youth Services Department will be hosting a Makers' Day crafts program. That is an annual event. And on March 31st, at 2:00 p.m., there will be a reception for local artist Mary H. Young at the library. If you haven't had the opportunity to see the show, please come to the library, I think you'll enjoy it very much. There's a lot of talent in this town, and we're happy to be a part of giving people an opportunity to express themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Director QB.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Sweeney. I live at 24 Hope Bend in West Orange. Of course, I thank you. It's good evening to the mayor, the council people, I'm sorry, and administration. When I first came here, I knew it was going to be somewhat of a controversial meeting. I saw all the fire trucks and everything out there. I'm glad there was something more positive. I'm here also, and it's timely. Mr. QB just spoke on all the things happening in the library. The library, I think everyone knows here, throughout the entire audience and on the podium, that the library is an essential community service, provides a lot of services, activities, equipment, books, magazines, some of which are new in my generation, are new before, but after my generation. Anyway, I want to speak on the resolution you have tonight. Your Resolution 8M, I think it's number 9919, in fact endorsing the recommendation and resolution of the Planning Board, which it adopted formally as a resolution on March 12. That resolution determined and recommended to the council, which you're going to decide on tonight, that the library area, it was called study area, but it effectively includes the library and a little bit of the parking lot around it. Mostly, it was focused on the library building. And the sum and substance of the report from the, it was the Higher Group and Associates, which was retained by the Planning Board and by the Planning Board, was that the library building had faulty arrangement, obsolescence, obsolete layout that adversely impacted and limited the library's functional effectiveness and ability to provide the services needed for a modern library, and that the building, or the area encompassing the building, had a detrimental effect on the general welfare of the community. Now, those are pretty harsh words and descriptive. We know the library does a lot of good, but that's not what I want to speak at. Tonight, when the council votes on this resolution, I think most of our community are going to view it as the same as deciding that we have to have a new library building. You can't come down and criticize that the library can't meet the community needs, that it's dysfunctional, it's laid out poorly, as otherwise. And effectively, what you'll be deciding when and if you approve the resolution tonight, and I'm, I value the study, I really do. I think it's, I think it's been long delayed. We really need to look at the library and what we need to do. But effectively, the resolution, if you adopt it, will be a determination that a new library is needed for West Orange. Now, that doesn't say where it'll be, how you get to it, what it will look like, and I think you'll have, you'll have a number of options. But you're really going to be asking them to, to determine whether you should redevelop and upgrade the current facility, whether you should build a brand-new library, either at the current location or another location, or you'll relocate to a properly redesigned building. But I don't think you can go back. Once you adopt and accept, as the Planning Board has done, the, the report and recommendations of the higher group, I think you're going to have to say, we, the township governing body, has determined that the building is dysfunctional and must be, something must be done with it. Of course, before, we had a plan to update it. I'm going to see, my time is running out, so I'm going to say that I have two recommendations to you, three recommendations. The council consider asking the library trustees or consultant to identify the requirements and needs for a new library and identify the area best for the library.
Your time is up.
Yes, I'm going to finish up with this last sentence. And expand the redevelopment area to include something more than just the library, including the whole municipal complex. I can go into the details, but five minutes is pretty limited when you're trying to get a point across. But I do thank you, as I say, much appreciated the study. We understand everything is ongoing, and you're, right now, you're just continuing the study and a plan, and I would hope and request that that's well-publicized so we all can put in our two sets. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Sweeney, thank you. Anyone else liking to speak to the Township Council? Mr. Malanga, please come up. I pointed Mr. Malanga. Mr. Turner, just, you'll have your turn, sir. Mr. Turner, please.
Council President, members of the council, good evening. Last week, as you know, the Planning Board recommended.
Can you speak to your address, please?
I'm sorry, Kevin Malanga, 57 Ridge Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last week, as you know, the Planning Board recommended to the council that the public library be declared an area in need of redevelopment. It sounds innocent. It sounds nice. It sounds positive. Most people say, great, we're going to get a new library. We're going to renovate the library. However, the law of redevelopment requires specific criteria in order for it to be an area in need of redevelopment, and the designation carries profound consequences. The New Jersey Supreme Court has ruled that only blighted areas may be declared an area in need of redevelopment. Does the West Orange Public Library look blighted to you? No reasonable person would argue that. The township hired a consultant with no experience in library design or construction, who opined that the library was obsolete because it was undersized and did not meet the demands of the digital age. This assertion was belied by the results of the survey conducted by the library itself. Only twenty-two percent of those surveyed said the library needed a total renovation. Only twenty percent said they wanted more study rooms, and only twelve percent desired more meeting rooms. As for the library and its purported failings in the digital age, only sixteen percent of the survey participants used the computers at the library, of which, by the way, have better software than the Livingston Public Library. And only six percent of the survey respondents said they wanted more computers at the library. In addition, only twenty percent of the respondents used the library's Wi-Fi. The survey results in no way support the conclusion that the library is digitally obsolete. What did the survey indicate? Most survey respondents, forty-two percent, wish for an expanded collection of books. Most importantly, the planning report relied upon information that was grossly misleading. The information in the planning report compared our library to libraries throughout the country and included communities that were much larger than West Orange. A more proper comparison is with libraries in New Jersey, and when that is done, you see that West Orange fares very well. Overall, our library ranks in the top third to the top quarter of all libraries in the state. With respect to the number of computers, West Orange ranks in the top nineteen percent. When it comes to the number of eBooks our library offers, West Orange ranks in the top twelve percent. So, much for the planners' claim that the West Orange library is digitally deficient. The purpose of the redevelopment law is to attract development and investors to blighted areas. This is done through tax abatements. The developer can also be chosen without public bidding, and any land involved can be sold to that developer without public bidding. That's what's going to be done here. At a council meeting in December, the administration has already said that they plan to sell the property to a developer with no public bidding. The only thing blighted about the West Orange Public Library is the administration's misuse of the redevelopment law. I respectfully submit to the council that the West Orange Public Library is not blighted. It is not an area in need of redevelopment, and any contention that it is is false. Thank you.
Norman Turner, 675 Mont Pleasant Avenue. Let me start out with, when will the township develop a cohesive plan? Anytime in the near future? If the library is an area in need of development, redevelopment, does that extend to the municipal building, including town hall and the police department and the municipal court? You start going down that road, you're down a slippery road. Is this township trying to make Rooney Drive our main street or the center of the township? If so, then present a cohesive plan to the people of this township. Rooney Drive does not provide access to all. Is that not a requirement for a place to put a library? I mean, some guy died recently on Rooney Drive, ran over by a car. It's facts. I'm making that up. Books are static. You can't move a library to any of those buildings within Rooney Drive. The static weight from those books alone will sink the floors. So, anyone with that crazy idea, think that you're going to move a library into any of the existing building, not happening. We're talking about a new building. Are we trying to kill people in wheelchairs or senior? You know, take, take it for what it's worth. One guy walked in a couple of weeks ago on Rooney Drive, got run over by a car. Poor man is deceased. If you move the library to Rooney Drive, then what is the plan? Do you have a plan for transportation? Are you going to put a transportation hub within the Essex Green where you have a cohesive plan, you can bring the buses in, bring people in, bring people out? Stopping on Prospect and walking across the street to go to the library, that's not accessibility to the library. If the intent is to create a divide between West Orange and Orange by moving the library or for some other crazy development reason, I don't think you guys ever taught this thing true yet. Or whoever the Planning Board that provided this plan thinks that you're going to move that library without understanding what the expense is, that's a large capital expenditure for the town. If we're going to do that, then that should be part of a cohesive plan. A drip, drip, drip plan is not a plan. A town without a main street or a common town center for shopping will never be successful. And our approach to development in this town is at other people's expense. Someone has seen portions of redevelopment, and they decided they want to work with whoever to redevelopment portions of the, it's not happening. And I don't think anyone is working at, what is a cohesive plan to move this town forward? The library, I do agree, the building sucks. We ought to do something with it. But this crazy idea of a redevelopment plan, when you just put or redevelop the area for the police department, the municipal court, town hall sucks, we could move that too. So, if you're going to do that, then move everything. And if you're going to sell the property, then bring a developer in, sit the developer down, and work a deal out. What you guys have done or what you have paid for is not what you should invest the tax dollars in. We're getting bad advice. And if the advice is via friends, then maybe we ought to just call our friends in and have them tell us what to do next. But we can't continue like this. And this is not personal. This is just aggravating for me because I sit and I look and I pay tax, and when I turn around, I see this, a plan here, a plan there. I drive down Main Street, and I look at Prism. How could you build that building and can't get people in there? You know, we say a hundred and we clap our hands. They put that building up by the train station, and it's full. I drive down Main Street, and the place looks like a ghost town. So, for whatever it's worth, maybe you should just go back to the planning stage and talk about an entire plan for the town and how you move the town forward. You don't have a plan. What you have is a drip, 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 and dripping is not a plan. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council?
Good evening, Claire. Claire Silvestri, 21 Grand View Avenue. I just want to echo the sentiments of the last two speakers about the issue of the public library. This is a very serious and important decision that you are making. I do not see the planner who developed the plan here tonight. It was discussed at the planning meeting, but, but I think the idea of declaring our library an area in need of redevelopment, there should be a presentation of this proposal, of this study that was done, and the ability for us to question the planner. But I do not see that tonight, and I would request that, that before the council votes on this, that, that be, a presentation is made. This is, this is not just approving some commercial building. This is a major step for our township, and I believe that we should have more transparency. Thank you.
Janice Johnson, 272 St. Cloud Avenue. I am, like many people, I received a notification in my email regarding tonight's decision and the vote. I did not get a chance to read a comprehensive report. I only read what was sent to me regarding the description of the library as obsolete and in need of redevelopment with a potential move, and I found that disconcerting, so that's the reason I'm here. I am wickedly tired, but I wanted to make sure. I want to just have my, my statements really be directed in support of keeping the library in the location that it's currently and really voicing some maybe unknown facts about how important not only the current location is to my life here in West Orange, I've lived here 12 years, and its importance to the overall work that not only I do, but my daughter does. My daughter, as you know, is Marlee Dias. She's the girl behind the 1,000 Black Girl Books campaign, and that campaign would not be possible without that library in that location. The librarians there were the ones that taught her how to read. The librarians there were the ones that took the intimate time to make sure she went through book series by series. The librarians there are the ones, whenever we talk about why libraries are important, there's a new study that came out that says each child needs at least 200 books in their home in order for them to have high levels of literacy, and that literacy would reduce the divide in terms of the racial gap we see in test scores. Now, given the economic constraints of our community, we know that racial minorities often do not have 200 books in their homes, but if they have access to the library, that can help to remediate that gap. So, I want to talk to you, and I want to make sure as you make your decisions, that you recognize that not only the geography of the library that allows access for those student populations that are in that part of West Orange, but the adjacent community and how important the residents of that community and the accessibility important the residents of that community and the accessibility, how important it is for some broader issues, particularly issues of literacy. I also wanna talk to you about the fact that I work across the street at 59 Main Street, and I have students from Newark who come to work in our office, and they have been interning at the library. The library's been training them in how to catalog books, how to make, learn the whole library system, and how to conduct research. And that is made possible because we have a bus that runs outside of the library on Main Street. So whatever decisions you make, you will make, and I will now make myself become educated on the report that you've gathered, but I do wanna talk to you about the geographic location does provide a lot of facility. The intimacy of the library, yes, it does need renovation, but I disagree with any characterization that says that it is so obsolete that it is not worthy of being renovated. And I find it disconcerting that of all the things that are on that property of land, the library was the only one that was discussed as being obsolete. So I ask you for great consideration as you think about where the library should be, and if you do choose to move it, you ought to think about how long will this town be without a library, because that will take some time, and how disruptive that would be for the kind of socio-emotional development as well as the literacy of the young people who are primarily the users of the library. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Pat.
Pat Sagalis, 430 Main Street, West Orange, speaking on the geography of the library and in advocating for its many seniors down on the lower part of West Orange, which runs most of Main Street, between Eagle Rock, speaking specifically of Degnan House and also the Rena House. Many seniors use the library. I know two specifically in my building that like to walk to the library. If you take the library away from that area, these seniors now must take two buses, two, the 21 to Main Street and the 71, which is very random, because they're never on time and they're never accurate, they're never there. You get off at Eagle Ridge, which is across the street from the Essex Green. Now you must transfer yourself by foot from Eagle Ridge, you cross Prospect, you have to go through Essex Green. Either you take that road around to through Rooney Circle, you must go through Cambria, back to 10 Rooney where they are planning this new site for the library. Once again, put an 80-year-old woman, a 70-year-old woman, or man, have them go from either Rena or Degnan House, and even seniors that are not in those buildings. Put them on the 71 bus, once again, have them get off at Eagle Ridge, and how many of these people have to walk, 70-year-olds, 60-year-olds, whatever, from Eagle Ridge back through, and if you can picture it in your mind, walking through the parking lot by Macy's backstage, through there, then you have to cross that street and get through and back into the back of Cambria. Does that make sense? No, and it's very cumbersome. So the geography does not work for many people, especially in the lower part of West Orange. And as an advocate for seniors, I think it stinks. That's it. Thank you.
Any other, any other residents wishing to speak to the Township Council? Yes, sir. Ms. Lauren?
Yes. Thank you, Lauren Swetvilaus, West Orange on Prospect Avenue. Mr. Lauren's what my students call me. Let's see, so regarding the library, I love to listen to these different comments. The report from the survey that was being referred to and discussed tonight can be found on a website, www.argreenwestorange.org, under the tab Town Projects, and there's a little tab there for library, and you can see the full report there that our Green West Orange got through an Oprah request. If we as residents think that this is about a new library, we're wrong. It's not about a new library. Getting a designation of blight does not mean we get a brand-new library in the same location, as I believe Mr. Malanga had stated, Mr. Turner had stated, that's really about getting that designation so that property can be sold, and it can be sold without proper bidding. If we want a new library, what we do is we don't go with a designation of an area in need of redevelopment, and we simply put the money in to getting a new library. We renovate that library to what we want. We can put it to a referendum and have the township residents vote and choose, we can have a nice community forum, as Mr. Mayor likes to have, and we can really let him know what we wanna see in our library. We don't need an area in need of redevelopment on this library. And if you think it's gonna end up at Essex Green, we're sadly mistaken as well, because it's not gonna be at Essex Green, it's gonna be a meandering path across roads to get to the library. So you can't just leave your kid there and go to Starbucks. Starbucks? There won't be a Starbucks. You're gonna have to go with your child, drive to the library, park, and it's gonna be trouble for a lot of other people. So it's all rosy, but the details, that's where we need to look. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none? Oh. Come on up. Come on up.
Jerome Eben, E.B.E.N., 26 Walker Road. There are many areas in this town that need an area of need. There's one about 500 feet from my front door that needs an area of need, and just go down there. I've talked about that before, I've talked about property maintenance across this town. There's probably 1,000 or more zoning violations and maintenance violations in this town. Certainly, the library is a beautiful building. I worked on the addition 40 years ago, so I know of the building and I know the program that was set 40 years ago. And the program was, when the library needs expansion, we're gonna expand downstairs. And so no one has ever expanded downstairs, because either that was lost somewhere along the line. Now, I'm also, I was not a registered architect at that time, but I'm a registered architect now, and I'm a licensed planner, and this is not a blighted area. You want blighted areas? I will take you on a tour of blighted areas in this town, knock your socks off, all right? I'm telling you that if we had proper maintenance of this building, proper maintenance, you wouldn't have the rusted doors that the report talked about, you wouldn't have the tripping hazard at the entrance that the report talked about, you wouldn't have a roof that needs to be replaced on the original building, you would replace the roof on the original building. And you wouldn't have ripped off all the brick on the building that didn't have to be ripped off and sit there for a year and a half without any facade on the building. Brick fell off the corner of the building because water got behind there and rusted out the support angles, and immediately we took down the brick of the building. There's just so much that is done blindly by this administration, followed by the council of Robert Sampson. I'm telling you that there are better ways to spend our money, there are better ways to do things. Lauren just spoke about it. Have a referendum, talk about it. Mr. Turner talked about putting the library, maybe putting the library up at Essex Green. He is, I don't know if he's an engineer or an architect, I'm an architect, I'm telling you, the buildings that he's talking about will not support the live load of all those books. So we're talking about either renovating the existing building or maintaining the building when it needs to be maintained and/or replacing that building in kind. Something has to be done. It's not ready for redevelopment, it's ready for renovation. Thank you very much.
I think I've said this a million times, because I talk about this subject almost at every meeting, the soliciting ordinance. I really wasn't going to talk about it, but the mayor had posted something on social media today that sort of ignited it again. I would appreciate the status if it's going to be rewritten, totally rewritten, but it will be changed in terms of hours. My question is, for Saturday, the hours are stated specifically. Why do we have that one portion that talks about sundown? It's confusing. And like I told you, my neighbor said it's stupid. So I'd like to know the status, please. Thank you.
No? Yes, sir.
My name is Frank Fresket, I live in 12 Burnett Terrace, West Orange. Frank Fresket, 12 Burnett Terrace, West Orange. Thank you. I just went to the library not too long ago. I enjoyed the library, and maybe it needs a facelift. I wouldn't have known better. If it wasn't an issue, I wouldn't have thought anything of it. I liked the place. Maybe it needs a facelift, maybe a little more, maybe a little more than that. But my big concern was accessibility. The fact that it's like in, you know, the downtown proper, I think that's where libraries should be seen, I think for accessibility, it's in the hub of the town. Good arguments about, you know, senior citizens have to get there and take them two buses if it was to be moved to another location is, I thought it was a very good argument. And also, it's a densely populated area, I don't know if, you know, the survey really took into account, you know, what the response would be if people said it was going to be moved. And if you're gonna move it to another place, do you take a survey around there, and like, how many people would you actually appreciate and utilize it if it was in a different location? Sounds like the place that's being relocated to wouldn't be very accessible. So it's no good to have a library if it's not accessible and it's not met to its, to its, met the needs of its population. I also really, anything that has to do with redevelopment or developing is always a concern, because, you know, I'm a taxpayer, so I don't know what ramifications down the road are gonna be. But I'm always suspicious, you know, I don't, you know, I think anything that has to do with development in this town, or anywhere for that matter, should be scrutinized, it should be very transparent, we should know everything that's going on, especially like the who, what, and wheres. Who are the people? Who's the, this no-bid contract that was mentioned, I don't like that. I don't understand why there wouldn't be some competition on who would take, who would take the development on. The fact that if there is gonna be one person, you wanna be transparent, I wanna know who that company is gonna be, what history have they had with this town, and how, if they had prior contracts with this town. So those are the concerns I have, and I think that's pretty much it that I can think of at this moment, so I thank you for your time.
My name is Cynthia Schwartz, 11 Linden Avenue, West Orange. By profession, I am a librarian with a specialty in knowledge management and competitive and business intelligence. What it means is that I coordinate the information among departments or among individuals within an organization, and the competitive intelligence part is the research, which I do all the time, depending on the clients. And the clients can be internal, they could be external to the organization. So I've read the study, and I've read the resolution, and what I find is that the resolution that you adopted really just said, we asked you to tell us if the library will meet this definition, you told us that, therefore we find it credible, and therefore we're going There is no way to objectively look at that study and see if that information could have come to a different conclusion, because you, the client, didn't ask for that. What you asked for is tell us if the library meets this definition, and that's what you got, because that's what you asked for. There isn't a way to look at that information and see if objectively it stands up, and I don't think that it doesn't stand up, but what it doesn't do is that it doesn't go far enough, it doesn't, it doesn't tell us what else could be done with that information, because you asked it to meet that definition, and that's where it stopped. It didn't say, or it wasn't asked of the people who did that study. Tell us if our library is deficient, and how can we address that, either short of redevelopment or including that, however it is. But there is no way to look at that information and change it, because that's how it was written. I write those things, I know how to do that. So that's one, that's one issue. The other issue with the library is that in West Orange, everybody knows we have three business districts. The one that's considered main is the one that's near the administration building where the library is now, so I'm watching the time. From this library, since they are, all libraries are economic drivers of a community, from this library, you can do anything you need to. Bank, post office, get a cup of coffee, take your kids to the playground, pick up the milk and eggs, do some shopping, you can, and this is all within walking distance. You can take the train to New York, you can take the bus to Newark, which by the way is a handy thing for a library to be in that position, because anything that, anything in our library that leads you to something else, you can then take it and go somewhere else. So those aspects have to be considered, but from the terms of this study, it really doesn't prove that it's a redevelopment issue, and in my view, this is the best of the three business areas of the town for the library to remain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. In front of you, and I'm sure some people in the mail probably got a postcard about our 43rd Annual Cherry Blossom Festival, it looks like the weather will cooperate and the trees will bloom when we actually have this festival this year. It starts April 6th and continues until April 14th, and a complete list of events is on our website, which is essexcountyNJ.org. We do have a bike race, 10K run, Family Fun Day, and one-mile fun run for families and children, and also the Bloom Fest, that's the culminating event on April 14th, all in Branchburg Park. It is a beautiful sight, especially when the cherry blossoms are in bloom. We hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Vivian Demus, 9 Spring Hill Drive, West Orange. I am ashamed to admit that I have lived in this town for nearly 20 years, and have been absolutely lazy about paying attention to what is going on. And in the last month and a half, I have had my eyes opened. There's an expression, "You get the government you deserve." And if you don't participate, if you don't participate, I am a proponent for "Keep your mouth shut," because you didn't open it up to change it before it happened. And I'm sitting here, listening about this library, about which frankly, I knew nothing. And I am listening to people, and I'm trying to figure out how this township is going to benefit if this plan is to blight and move this thing to a place where I'm trying to imagine children going to where this seems to be going, and trying to access the services of this library. And how they're going to do that is beyond me. How parents are going to be easily, and nothing in life is easy, reasonably easily able to take their kids to participate. What's the point of having a library if people can't get to it? Whether you're old, young, or in between. Separately from this, I'm learning things that tell me that there's less transparency than we need, that there is from, I'm seeing on the schedule for today, it's something about recycling. Recycling and garbage to me go together. My understanding is, there's already a decision made about garbage, and how it's going to be handled for, I guess, the next year. And if what I heard is true, I am absolutely flabbergasted that this council voted and gave the contract to the same people who underbid, apparently purposely, to get the contract last time, and we're now paying for that. And if that's true, everyone who voted for that contract should be ashamed of themselves. And I am ashamed for not knowing about it, to come here before it was signed. So I'm now here listening today, and I'm telling you right now, if you move on this plan for the library, plan? There doesn't seem to be any plan. It seems to be a matter of convenience and benefit for someone other than our kids, and our seniors, and people like me. And now, I'm seeing this, and I'm telling you, you're going to see me more often, because I want to know what's going on. I don't like the direction it's going in. And I expect you guys to own up and do the right thing.
No one else? Yes?
Good to see you. One doesn't take lightly the proposed-
Please state your name and address.
Sally Malanga, Sally Malanga Ridge Road, sorry, forgot. One doesn't take lightly the proposed maneuvers that will affect the much beloved institution like our public library. And you're really taking, taking some really fierce criticism on this proposal. I cannot say that I am for it. I think the library would benefit from a renovation, as would any public building, but it does not need to be demolished, it does not need to be moved to an office park and its land sold to a developer. This has become a very complex endeavor, and simple is better. In addition, I'm feeling like we are backing into a solution to help a couple of developers on either end of the problem. One is the developer of Executive Drive, who we know is looking for a tax abatement. They bought the property. Apparently, they are looking for us to help supply tenants, like the library. And it seems then, we are also helping another developer who will receive the library's land, once it's vacated. And again, if you declare it an area in need of redevelopment, then no bid is, no competitive bidding is required. So I, I'm not sure if this is in the interest of the taxpayers. I'm also really wondering what it means that the current resolution states the area in need of redevelopment should be expanded to include additional properties in the same area. Does that mean that the administration seeks also to sell the Town Hall, the Municipal Court, and the Police Department building? I feel like the residents should know what the total plan is, and the Town Council should know what the total plan is. So I request that you vote no on the area in need of redevelopment for the library, keep the library where it is, where it's needed, add some extra square footage, and that is, seems like the most reasonable course of action. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. I don't see anybody else. Seeing no one else, I close public comment, and I open the comment floor to my council colleagues. Councilwoman McCartney.
Council President, thank you. I feel I do have to respond to all the comments that were just made about the library, because I am the council liaison to the planning board. The planning board did unanimously vote to designate the area as an area in need of redevelopment. And I think, I guess it's unfortunate that everyone jumped to these conclusions. It was Cynthia Schwartz, really, a research librarian, that defined what we just did. The planning board was given a task to determine if the library meets the criteria to be designated as an area in need of redevelopment. And between the eight studies, interviews that were conducted by the professional, experienced, well-versed planner, higher gruel, it was determined that it does meet the plan. Every, that's all we're voting on. Does it meet the criteria? The study area, I'll just read right from the study. "The study area can be designated as an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to criteria D from the local redevelopment and housing law. The library facility exhibits a faulty arrangement, obsolete layout, and obsolescence, which are supported by substantial evidence outlined in this report." There was the architects, Arkari and Ayovina. Library assessment, Garden State Environmental Asbestos Study. A sampling report demonstrates that there are numerous physical deficiencies in the building, the mechanical and electrical systems are outdated, there are structural and finish issues, ADA accessibility deficiencies, fire suppression system issues, and asbestos abatement is necessary. The obsolescence of the library building is, I know it sounds harsh, I know Mr. Sweeney mentioned this, detrimental to the welfare, because it inhibits the provision of essential services that promote equity, education, and a sense of community. So all we were tasked to do was determine if it meets this criteria. And based on the study, and the unanimous vote of the planning board, we did agree that it does meet this criteria. There was no, now, according to, there's no mention, also, there's no mention in the study about blight. The local housing redevelopment, local redevelopment and housing law was adopted in 1992. It is largely based on the law from 1949, that does talk about blight. Blight is not mentioned, not once, in this study, because the law was updated in 1992. So the next step, determining that this is an area in need of redevelopment, the next step is to develop the plan. There was no mention whatsoever about going to Essex Green that people mentioned. There was, there was no mention. There's really, all we were doing on planning board level was determining if it's an area in need of redevelopment. I don't know what else to say. There's no mention about moving the library. That would come, I guess, just like any other plan comes next. If this is approved, then a public hearing and determination to do what to do, keep the library, create an annex, that comes next. That was not discussed at the planning board meeting. What was discussed, I think extensively by my colleagues on the planning board and by members that were there, is that the, the library is an essential part of our community. And though, I can find, oh my goodness, there's so much more in here. Here. "The main body of the library does not offer enough seating, lacks quiet study rooms, has an undersized teen section, does not have enough outlets for charging stations to meet demand. Library has limited space to offer programs." What was discussed at the planning board is that even with these limitations, the library has created program that addresses every age in our community. So there was no, no criticism of the library, it was the conditions of the library and the setting itself. Someone mentioned about expanding the redevelopment zone. One of the, the condition of the planning board was, in the future, if we were to determine to include the municipal complex. Mr. Eben made a comment about, I know where he lives, and I know the areas that he's talking about that could be designated. This is a non-condemnation study. What Mr. Eben was talking about is, I am going to say, South Valley Road. Those are privately owned. This, that would be a condemnation study. We did not do that with the library, because it's municipal. So let me think what else I can say. There was a lot of talk about the geography. I know Ms. Johnson, geography of the library. The study was to determine the condition of the library, not the programming, and not moving it elsewhere in town. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kukrovjak.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to everyone who came up to speak tonight. I would love to see you coming back every council meeting, being familiar with the legislation ahead of time, and keeping up with what's going on. Because a lot of you guys are engaged, and that's darn good, as Ms., I don't know how to pronounce her last name, as she said, "You get the government that you deserve." I just want to read you a little bit of the state redevelopment law, so that you'll know what the law actually says. Here's what it says, the very first provision of the local redevelopment and housing law says, sorry, excuse me. "The legislature hereby finds, determines, and declares there exist, have existed, and persist in various communities of this state, conditions of deterioration in housing, commercial, and industrial installations, public services and facilities, and other physical components and supports of community life, and improper or lack of proper development which result from forces which are amenable to correction and amelioration by concerted effort by responsible public bodies, and without this public effort are not likely to be corrected or ameliorated by private effort." You should all know that the library board and the township have worked for years to put together a plan to renovate the library. That plan is now on hold, because the council majority has approved studying a office building in Executive Drive as a possible location for the library. Getting back to the redevelopment law. The redevelopment law mentions blight two times. In the definition of a redevelopment area, or an area in need of redevelopment, it says, "It means an area determined to be in need of redevelopment pursuant to Sections 5 and 6 of P.Dat.l.1992(c) 79, blah, 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 or determined heretofore to be a blighted area." Blighted area is in quotation marks, pursuant to the public law from 1949. It refers to the original repeal of the Act, which was actually called the blighted, had blighted in the title. Both determinations is made pursuant to the authority of Article 8, Section 3, Paragraph 1 of the state constitution, which is where it derives the power. And if you go to read the state constitution, it uses the word blight. So that's the first mention of blight in the law. The second law says, the second reference says, "An area determined to be in need of redevelopment pursuant to this section shall be deemed to be a blighted area." Again, blighted area is in quotation marks, for the purposes of Article 8, Section 3, Paragraph 1 of the constitution. All right? So there should be no question in anyone's mind that if, if, under this law, supposedly the planning board and the study author found that this is an area in need of redevelopment, they have to, by law, decide that it is a blighted area. Now, everybody who is familiar with the library, raise your hands. How many of you, now, leave your hands up if you think the area is blighted? Thank you. I, I know this is an unusual setting, but I would appreciate if you didn't applaud, and didn't boo, because it's going to be a long meeting. I just want to comment on some of the, the comments at public comment. I think Mr. Turney made a great observation, that we need a cohesive plan, a cohesive plan that puts it all together, so that it makes sense, and so that you can understand what we're trying to do. If we're going to move that library, you're darn right, we need a plan for transportation. As Ms. Galas pointed out, there is no transportation to this proposed area in Executive Drive. I want to second what Ms. Silvestri said, that the planner, who was hired to write this redevelopment study, which is required under the law, is not here tonight to present on her study, to answer questions from the council, and to answer questions from you. I find it unconscionable that we are going to be asked to take a major step in what is going to impact a major institution in our township, and we can't even question the person that wrote it. Now, I went to the planning board, and I heard the testimony and the questioning of the planning board, and I can tell you that this study needs to be vetted with the author. When the author came up and was questioned on this by Mr. Malanga and others, she did not even know, she, she did not even know, she used this study from, from a federal organization of all of the libraries in the country, and she used it to demonstrate that our library was deficient in so many ways. Mr. Malanga asked her, "What, what's the cohort? What, what's the cohort? What is the sample size of this that you're comparing this to?" And she didn't know.
It didn't matter.
There are other things that happened at the planning board meeting that need to be brought up here. The planning board, under the law, is supposed to make a recommendation. The council is supposed to not make the recommendation, make the decision about whether this is. And for, for the administration to expect us to just take their, her report without any sort of vetting, without any sort of questioning, without any chance for you guys to ask her questions, I find it unconscionable. This is now the second time that the council has been asked by the administration to consider a redevelopment study where the author of the study is not present. The first time that that was done was for Executive Drive and Essex Green. Let me see another show of hands. How many people are familiar with Executive Drive and Essex Green? Now, how many people, how many people think that it's blighted? Thank you. But that's exactly what happened. Thank you. I, I saw the hand in the back, somebody does think it's blighted, so, so thank you. But most of the people that raised their hands didn't. And again, we did not have an opportunity to question the plan author about his designation that it's blighted and an area in need of redevelopment. And I'm going to put, put up a motion from the floor later on when this comes up on the agenda, and I'm going to move that the council does not consider this, that it tables it, or votes it down, until we get the planner who can come and answer our questions about this plan. Ms. Johnson, thank you very much for coming. You hit the nail on the head about accessibility. I, I keep hearing it over and over again, and every one of you are right. Moving this to Executive Drive is going to present major problems for accessibility. And Ms. Morelli, the blame's on me. I know we've talked about this a couple of times, and I've been taken up with a lot of other things, but I promise that we will get this done and draft to the, uh, to the town legal department in time to be considered, perhaps at the next council meeting. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney, did you want to, did you want to rebut any comments?
No, my colleagues haven't spoken yet, but yes, I felt that everything you just said was very misleading. You're still talking about a blighted law that was, that was amended, was written in 1949, amended in 1992. Nothing in this area, in this study talks about blight, and nothing talks about moving the library. This is, all we are being asked to do is designate the site, and then we would create the plan.
Great. I'm happy to rebut that, Council President. If you let her rebut me, I'd love to be able to rebut her.
Be my guest.
I read from the redevelopment law. You all heard it. You can all go online and find it. That's exactly what it says.
And the planning board followed it.
Please, could I have the floor? Thank you.
I thought we were rebutting each other.
Please, could you let me speak?
Finish.
Thank you. And it's also important to understand, in the context of what's going on, where this redevelopment study fits in. Again, as, as the speakers have spoken, and they were absolutely correct, if this is found to be an area in need of redevelopment, it will qualify for sale and development without competitive bidding. It also enables the potential for payments in lieu of taxes, which can be up to 30 years, and basically takes away future tax revenue as an incentive to the developers to do the redevelopment. But what I told you about the law, it specifically says it has to be a blighted area. I challenge anybody in this room to find any New Jersey Supreme Court decision about the redevelopment law that does not absolutely specify that everything that qualifies has to be blighted. I've got four decisions on my laptop, if I could find them. In each one of them, they say multiple times that the property, because of the law, has to be blighted. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Councilwoman? Okay. Councilwoman?
I'll go. No, no.
Councilwoman Castellino.
First, I'd like to hear from Mr., from the administration in regards to the Supreme Court ruling from our council.
Mr. Schrempf.
If you're, if you're referring to Mr. Malanga's lawsuit that's been pending, it was argued on August 22nd, 2018, before Judge Partels, it's on reserve. It's not the Supreme Court, it's the trial court. And it's Mr. Malanga's challenge to the Essex Green Executive Drive area as an area in need of redevelopment. So that is pending, we are full, there is no restraining order, and the township is fully authorized to go forward with the redevelopment process. Mr. Malanga never sought, nor obtained any kind of restraining order at all. So the township is fully within its authority to go forward.
Becker Farm Road, Roseland. Well, August 2018, the Roseland Township Council approved that as a site of redevelopment. You drive through Becker Farm Road, do you see blightedness? No. Verona, two projects in Verona and Bloomfield Ave. And I've said this meeting after meeting after meeting. We have not done anything inappropriate with the projects that we have proposed, or the studies that have been done. And, and that's unfortunate that that is getting, that folks are getting misinformed out there. And I'm glad that the speakers that came tonight are coming to the meetings. The administration has been nothing but transparent. So if you've been to all the meetings, or seen all the meetings, you know from many meetings back, that when they first spoke about the possibility of this library, it also was mentioned with, within keeping an annex there, so we would have the site, because we are mindful of our community and where the library is currently located. But there's also a need. I, I said, I'm fundraising trustee for the Friends of the West Orange Public Library. I grew up in town. I sat many of the night doing a term paper in the, in the lower level of, of that building. It really hasn't changed since then, except for all the wonderful work the Friends group has done to clean it up. But as far as the electric and all the infrastructure, has not changed. We had a great dinner there, fundraiser there a couple of years ago, and we can't have another one, because when the fire chief was there, not our current fire chief, but our prior fire chief, I got, we got scolded, because it was in violation, and we shouldn't have had the event. So, we can't even have a, a large event such as that, because of the fire codes that need to be updated. The ADA, again, Council Kukrovjak is correct, there was a five-year facility studies done on the library. The mayor had sat down early on with Mr. QB, who was very supportive of this initiative this evening, and the majority of the library board. So everything has been transparent, just because you may not hear about things, or may not see them, they've been happening, and we've been informed, and we've been getting the information. No one has kept any information from us, and we've been updated. I'm sure the mayor's here this evening, he could speak to the, the macro of the plan, but tonight is just about determining this, if this site is an area of redevelopment, which I feel it is. That doesn't mean we can't expand upon that. I had Jerry Sweeney, we had a lovely, about, talked about an hour yesterday, it was pretty lengthy. So, a lot of great ideas, that doesn't mean we can't incorporate new ideas, think out of the box. But we have a senior jitney service. So as far as our senior citizens not being able to get to Essex Green is ridiculous, because we have a senior jitney service, we also, again, there is mass transportation, and we'd have to revisit that, and I've been, I would be willing to work on that myself with the transit authorities in town, in the township. The pedestrian safety commission had done a walkthrough up there, and the, the owner of Essex Green is being very compliant and changing their plans already. I've been sitting at all the zoning board meetings, so to make sure that's a walkable community up at the new Essex Green site. So a lot is going into this. We had a senior citizen survey, we wouldn't mention tonight also the whole reason why, and again, I don't want to take away from the mayor when he speaks. But the whole reason for converting this building too, is we had a senior citizen survey done, and our seniors want to stay in town. They want to age in place here. They want affordable housing. And so we redeveloped the current library site, that's going to be a senior housing plan that may be coming to us. So there's great things that we're looking at, we're not just saying, "Oh, let's just move the library because the heck of it, and stick it up in Essex Green." That's not what has happened here. There's been a, a long, thought-out plan that we have to take in baby steps. And tonight's another baby step. We're not there yet, we may not get there. Mr. Turner, there was an engineering study done, we don't have it back yet, to determine if that building up at Essex Green can hold the weight of the books. And if it can't, again, we'll have to look at other avenues. But as far as this current building, that's been here, that's been a staple in West Orange community, whether we move it, there will be an annex there. And if we don't move it, we're going to continue with our, our facilities plan, to make it the best possible library that we can. Ms. Morelli, in regards to solicitation policy, I just want to remind folks, because, again, when, I believe it was Mr., Mr. Kaiser, a few months ago, when we talked about the solicitation policy previously, ironically, there's only been three permits taken out this past year. And so that was a concern of mine. And so folks, if you're, if you have someone, knock on your door, come to your door, make sure you ask if they have a permit. So, policy or not, they're supposed to have a permit if they are to knock on your door. So do not open your door for someone, regardless, and if they have a permit. I had a gentleman stop by my house a couple of weeks ago, looking to sell meat out of his truck, so it was crazy. So, there's a lot of vendors out there, but please make sure, you, you make sure that folks are supposed to have a permit when they come to your home. If not, please call the police desk. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Matu Brown.
Thank you. I first want to start off by thanking everyone who is here, those of you who've taken the time to do your research, present us with your thoughtful opinions, and your insights, and your perspectives. I think it's very important that the council hear and listen to each and every one of your views. And for those who are just coming to town council, welcome. I hope to see you more often. I think it's very important that we are involved and we don't check out, because these are things that affect us and have long-term implications for, for our town and our residents. With respect to the library, since, well, Ms. Morelli, apologies once again. I, I do understand, with respect to the solicitation ordinance, that not everyone applies for a permit, but they're going to come knocking on your door regardless. I would hope that we could just change the, the language to include daylight savings time, so that we can have a, a permanent timeframe there. I don't think that that is really too much to ask for. I think it's a simple solution, so that you, you're heard. With respect to the library, Mr. Turner, thank you for your words. It, it's one of the things, and, and Mr. Eben, it's one of the things that I have an issue with, that we don't have a cohesive plan. And I, I don't want to rely on a designation of redevelopment in order to make a plan. I, I'd rather start my comfort level for so many reasons, for your voices at the table, for your opinions at the table, for your creative ideas at the table. I'd rather start with a cohesive plan. I don't want a designation to tell us then what that plan is going to be. I realize we do have a need for senior citizen housing. We talk about aging in place often. But again, that should start with a plan, not a designation. I feel like a designation works backward to that effect. I too am, you know, I, I visited the library, and it is awkward, to say the least, the way it's set up, it's not very welcoming for different events to happen simultaneously. I have two sisters that have moved here and have young children, and they leave West Orange to go to a different library. Sorry, Dave, it's not personal, it's just the reality. We certainly need to update, revamp, renovate, bring more programs, but I, I certainly don't believe that it is something that has to be done through a designation. I understand, with respect to the designation, and being able to name a developer, and that way the township has more control over what is developed there. I can appreciate that as well, from a perspective of overdevelopment, from, again, the perspective of needing senior citizen housing affordable. But again, I, I don't feel that I can support a designation to work backwards from. I'd rather a cohesive plan and, and, and look forward. Because I did also read in the resolution that it said that we could potentially expand the area of the designation. Why don't we know that now? Why can't we look at the entire area, if we're going to move the center of town, to what is geographically the center of town, Essex Green, and, and focus on what that is going to look like? We need a cohesive plan to make sure that we move forward responsibly, and not the piecemeal redevelopment and development that, that we have had for such a long time in West Orange. I look forward to working with the council members and the administration on getting us on that track, to make sure that the decisions that we're making are completely and wholly inclusive of, of everyone's perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vivian, you said something tonight that is very important, and you spoke about, "You're going to be here at every meeting, and you're going to act a..." I'm sorry? Okay. Okay. Let me, let me, let me, let me, let me talk. My turn. My turn. We have boards, and we have meetings, and you hear everybody talking about Essex Green, how they have to walk their children from one side of Essex Green to the library. Nobody said that. Has anybody seen the plan, if the library goes up there, or where the parking's going to be? This is not a question. It's to think about this. But that's why, if you look at the pedestrian safety advisory board, okay, everybody had their complaints about Essex Green? Well, guess what? Five of my top members got together with the architects and the engineers, and with the owners of Essex Green, met with them for four hours, because we courteously and spoke to them in a professional courteous way about traffic and safety pedestrian situations with Essex Green and the development. And guess what? Everything we asked for, we got. Why? Because our members participate. And that's what you need. You sit here, and I hear about, "Oh, we're going to have to have the seniors take the 71 bus up to Eagle Ridge, walk across that, walk down the..." Has anybody seen maybe what the town has in plan? No, I didn't hear that tonight. It's all what you're assuming, and, and that's the thing. You're assuming. And you're assuming that we don't have to worry about anywhere else in the township but Main Street. Well, let's tell you something. We were voted on by everybody in the township of West Orange, and we're responsible for every resident, no matter where they live in the township of West Orange. But I didn't hear that tonight. The other thing is, where Mr. Turner brought up about Edison Loss, Mr. Turner was always saying, "Who was going to live there? Nobody was going to live in Edison Loss." And I remember that when I came on the council, and before I came on the council. And guess what? There's over 100 people living down there. Property values are coming up. People are buying property. People are investing in stores, and buildings, and everything else. It takes one thing to roll it out. You talk about having a plan. You can't do a plan till you get a good base. It's just like making a great cake. It's just like going to Olivia and Willow. They make a great product, because they have a great base, and that's what you need. And what we started on Main Street is a great base. People are recognizing Main Street, and I'm sick and tired of people saying, "Who's going to live there?" It used to bother me. "What do you mean, 'who is going to live there'?" Well, look who the residents are who are living in Edison Loss. But there were comments for many years, "Who was going to live there?" And I took that very personal. "What do you mean, 'who'? What type of people are you talking about? Who is going to live there?" It's terrible. But we have a base, and we're working on it. The Downtown Alliance is working on it to expand the enterprise zone, the special improvement district, and that's what we're doing. But we're rolling it out to include, to build the businesses, to give them the support they need. Okay? That's where you get your plan. That's where you get your bases. But don't come here with falsities, and saying that nothing's happening down there, we're giving everything away, and, and we're not. We're building a base, especially in our downtown corridor. And you can see it. So don't tell me you don't see anything. We see new bakeries, people making investments, people making residential things, but you, you come up and you say, "Nothing's happening." It is. You talk about the library, all you say is, "We're going to drag your kids through the parking lot." Nobody's made decisions that, nobody's taken a look at any plan, any parking. It's just all you're assuming. Or, "What are we going to do with our seniors?" We care a lot about our seniors, we do. But then anybody asking the plan that the development talks about having a possible senior center down there, which we do need, and a developer will build, that there possibly would be a satellite library down there for the people that live down there? Okay? That's what I'm saying. But everybody's making these grand assumptions, and it's not right. If you want to get things done, come to our board meetings, come to pedestrian safety, go to the zoning board meetings, come to the Downtown Alliance, make your opinions known. Volunteer to help. We need as many people as possible. And you could see it, what's happened in our board, and I have to say it again, with pedestrian safety, we've gotten so much done, with the talented people from all over this township have gotten through, the light at Alyssa Drive, the road diet that is being implemented, all the safety enhancements, the mid-block crosswalks that are going by our schools. These are the things you have to see. If you want any of it upset, then you come to the meetings, just like everybody else comes, and you make your point heard. We look forward to it. We want your help. We want you to tell us exactly how you feel, but don't come here with accusations, and don't come here with assumptions. Come here with educated information and ask the questions. We ask questions all the time. There's no such thing as a stupid question. But I get totally offended when people talk about Edison Loss and "who is going to live there." Thank you. Thank you. Please sit down, Mr. Turner. Public comment is over, sir. Mr. Turner?
I can't even hear you say.
It's a fun—I—I didn't mean to misrepresent myself. I am on the Friends—the so is Councilman Kukoviac. We're on the fundraising group for the library.
So, like you said, you're on the board of the Public Library?
Yeah, no, I'm—not on that board. We're not on that library board.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Turner?
The Friends of the West Orange Public Library.
I actually have a question.
I don't know. Mr. Trank, is that an issue?
Does the administration ask to respond to any of the comments or questions?
Mayor Parisi?
Council President?
Thank you. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight to speak about this library. I feel bad that there's a lot of angst about this. It's not supposed to be that type of process. I do think it's unfair, though, to come here and intimate of anything inappropriate. The people here should not think they care any more about the town than the people up here do. We all care about the town. We have to weigh a lot of issues, a lot of legality. We have to follow the law. We have to do what we think ultimately is right. And we recognize always that people will not always agree. But we should always have the facts before we decide we don't agree. We can talk about the law and the word blighted and whether or not this meets that. I would argue that we could all debate what blighted even means. Bloomfield has four redevelopment zones. Glen Ridge has one. Livingston one. Maplewood two. Montclair 12. Nutley one. Roseland two. South Orange two. Verona two. West Caldwell five. I think most of us would agree that we wouldn't think of most of those towns and think of blighted, depending on what our definition of blighted is. However, a couple of people at the microphone tonight talked about our responsibility. And I would argue that we would be entirely irresponsible if we were not looking at every possible option to improve our community. So maybe some of us might say that the library isn't blighted in your particular definition. Should we, as a community and as local leaders, decide that we should wait until the thing has fallen apart to do something? I'm all for a comprehensive plan. But in the real world, that's not always practical. We can develop a large, long-term plan for this community, but sometimes things happen beyond our control that change that plan. We're going to vote later on about purchasing Rock Spring. Three months ago, that wasn't even a blip on the screen. And I can tell you, six months ago, looking at the library as a possible site in area of needed redevelopment wasn't on the screen. But things happened. Essex Green sold. Executive Drive sold. And we saw that as potential to look at what's best for the community. Now, if we want to cite the law, then you got to cite the law. And the law says the planning board does the investigation and makes the decision. The council either decides to memorialize it or not. So we can't say as a community that we're going to follow the law sometimes, but not all the times. And the law says that declaring the area in need of redevelopment is the first step to developing the plan. A lot of residents talked about, where's the plan? I'll tell you right now, there's no plan. There's no plan because this is the first step in developing the plan. I will tell you what I've been clear about from the beginning. The administration has a concept of a plan. Yes, we think the library is functionable, but shouldn't we want to make it better? The library board, over the history of our community, has often sought to relocate the library. Going back 30 years, they sought to move it to the center of town. Going back 15 years, we sought to move it to the Main Street redevelopment zone. The idea of creating a new library is not new to this town. In fact, the Library Foundation, which is the predecessor to the Friends, was created to raise money to build the new library. These are not new concepts. So when the opportunity came up, we thought it was worth exploring. However, not without a reasonable plan and an ambitious plan for what could be done there. The township has a very practical need for affordable senior citizen housing. And it's been talked about a great deal, often in criticism of the administration, that we don't have a senior community center. And in each case, I had said previously, the reason was we didn't have the location. This could give us the location. So in case there's a little vagueness as to about what the administration's intention, we are only even looking at this because we researched with developers who do this type of construction, and we determined that, yes, we can fit 65 affordable senior citizen units on that property as well as a 15,000-square-foot community senior citizen center slash librarianics. Why would that not be worth pursuing? Why would that not be worth pursuing? We know there's things to achieve before doing that, but why would it not be responsible government to at least look at that? We don't have a lot of land left in town, which is why the Rock Spring purchase is so attractive. So we don't have land otherwise to build senior citizen housing and a community center. This provides us the option. It was talked about why we didn't include the Town Hall and the Police Department. First of all, the Police Department, though has some structural obstacles, it's only built 25 years ago. Town Hall is a much larger building, and though not historically designated, does have some historic significance to the community. And me, speaking only for myself, I wouldn't recommend moving it. I want the Town Hall where it is. It's a pretty building. It's not perfectly functional, but it's a pretty building. But the library, though part of the municipal complex, isn't centrally located. There's been a lot of talk about accessibility, but let's be clear here. The library is not accessible to a lot of the community. In fact, the library director has even indicated that statistics show a lot of our residents are going to Livingston, simply because they live closer to Livingston. Buried on Rooney Circle, is it the perfect location? No, maybe not. But let's—but let's be—let's be real here. There was talk about children at our library. It's on Mount Pleasant Avenue, near 280. I wouldn't want my child running along the front lawn of the library. There's no parking lot, and the backside of the library is the municipal parking lot with town employees and police cars running in and out. The library now isn't—isn't kid-friendly, and it's not necessarily perfectly accessible. Someone mentioned that seniors from the Deegan House walk over Main Street to the library, a mile point three, but yet they can't walk across the street at Rooney Circle to a new location? That's not realistic. So there are serious issues to consider, but we should base it on the facts and a full understanding of what the objectives are and what the obstacles are. There's no plan. But if we are going to develop a plan that's going to move the library, first and foremost, it would only be with the full support of the director and the board. Right now, they are conceptually supportive, but we would never do it if they weren't supportive. We also wouldn't do it if the new location at 10 Rooney Circle couldn't house a library. And the truth is, it can. There are some obstacles, sure. But why would we not want to pursue a better library centrally located in town as part of—as an overall redevelopment zone that would probably be the same location as a dog park, new animal shelter, part of the Essex Green renovation, which should be voted on the next zoning board meeting? Someone mentioned that the current location is close to shopping, is close to getting coffee. So would Essex Green. So we understand every location might have some positives and negatives over other. But it's incumbent upon us to look at all the facts before we decide as a community that it's not worth pursuing. This does not mean—for those that are new to come to these meetings, this vote does not mean the library's moving. We don't even have a location to move it to yet. It simply means we're going to study the possibility, and the possibility is to build senior citizen housing and a senior citizen community center with a librarianics. Why would we not want to pursue that? Why would it be deemed irresponsible of us to want to pursue that? Nothing happens here tonight definitively if the council approves this. We simply take the next steps to develop a plan. There was talk about the no bid, the dreaded no bid contract. Let's be clear what it means to create a redevelopment zone. Yes, it creates the possibility for a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes. But just to be clear, there's no taxes on the library now. We own it. If we get to the steps down the road where we were to select a developer to develop that property, any money generated from that property would be more than we're getting now, because right now, we're getting not any. But the process of a redevelopment zone creates a process where you select the developer, not the dreaded no bid contract and all our friends get the job. It simply means it's a different process because short of that, the only way to sell public property is the highest bidder, period. Could be a developer from California who don't give a damn about the town, has no track record in doing this type of construction, but he's the highest bidder, and that's what we're stuck with. That's not good government either. And I can tell you from experience, the lowest responsible bidder is not always good government. So why would we want to undertake a process like this to make a major change in our community, what I would argue would be a significantly better change for our community, and leave it to simply submitting the largest offer? Wouldn't we want a process for determining the developer based on a lot of criteria? It's not a no bid contract. We just sign a contract and there's no public process. Of course, there's a vetting process, but it's under different criteria than simply the largest dollar amount. This is a complicated process, no doubt. I love that people are interested in it. But we should understand what the facts are and what the steps are before we automatically poo-poo something. Redevelopment on Main Street was long and painful, and yes, litigation slowed it up a long time. But it's a several hundred million dollar investment in our community with over 100 people living in it, and the only reason it's not more, Mr. Turner, is because they're still constructing them as they're—as they're moving. So despite what some people here might feel, redevelopment process is not a curse. All these communities right around us, many that I can tell you, residents often say to me, we should do like South Orange does, we should be like Montclair, we should be like Verona. They're all doing it because it's a better process for encouraging investment and the right investment into your community, to have control over a process that's short of that, we don't have control over. So I appreciate everyone's concerns. Is all I ask, is that whatever happens tonight, that we get the facts and understand the pros and cons before we jump to decisions. We are not doing this because we want to board up the library. We recognize it's a vital resource for the community. We simply see this as an opportunity to build a better library and add senior houses—senior housing and a community center that we don't have otherwise. If we get to the point where it doesn't happen, we don't do it. But it's incumbent upon us as local officials and as a community to want to do better than we've done in the past. Thank you, Council President.
At this time in the agenda, because I don't have to guess, the majority of the residents here tonight would like to move forward and us discuss and vote on ordinance 2564-19. So, Madam Clerk, I'd like to go out of order and like to go to the ordinance for submission on second and final reading.
Okay. 2564-19, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property, commonly known as the Rock Spring Golf Course, buy-in in the township of West Orange and the county of Essex, state of New Jersey appropriating $12,50,340, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $12,50,340 bond or notes of the townships to finance the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes.
That was just for introduction.
There's a lighter side—the council meetings, okay. Okay. At this point in time, I'm going to open the floor to any resident who would like to be heard on this ordinance for the issuing of bonds for the purchase of Rock Spring Golf Club. I ask you, when you come up to the microphone, please take your time, speak clearly, and let's see how you feel. So anyone wishing to be heard on this ordinance. Mr. Grossman, our town advocate.
Mr. President, I just want to report that last Wednesday, in our bond council is present, the local finance board, upon the presentation by the mayor and his staff, unanimously approved the waiver of any deposit by the township subject to a future Green Acres deposit. But the local finance board of the state of New Jersey has approved going forward tonight, as has the office of the state comptroller.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Mr. Grossman?
Good evening. My name is Harvey Grossman, and I appear here tonight as public advocate. It is my very strong opinion that the acquisition of Rock Spring Country Club proceed with all deliberate speed. In advance of tonight's meeting, I sent letters to Councilman Kukoviac—I sent a letter to Councilman Kukoviac with copies to the mayor and the full council that reads in part as follows. While you acknowledge the importance—this is addressed to Councilman Kukoviac—while you acknowledge the importance of the preservation of a significant amount of open space which would be acquired by the town, you suggest that the adverse financial consequences to the township going forward, you have not presented any evidence to support that theory. I'm asking you now to present any hard facts, hard facts, not dialogue, which—on which you rely to make this argument. Earlier today, you sent me an email in response to my letter, and you take the position that the administration has withheld information, concealed information from you and the council, limiting the council's ability to, quote, "make the most informed judgment necessary to approve the application, notwithstanding your request." So I ask you now, what information has been withheld from you? When and to whom did you make such requests? Conversely, with regard to concern for costs, have you consulted with or done any study of the cost to the township of infrastructure if the property is not purchased by the town and is sold to a developer? What costs would the town incur by reason of this development process? For example, a new school, new traffic patterns on Northfield Avenue, demands on all emergency services. Have you—do you have any facts? And what facts have been withheld from you? And who withheld those facts from you? You say this, now produce it. For residents in the Northfield area—and I am a— For residents in the Northfield area, and I am among them, we already deal with the volume of traffic from the recreational conflicts, the influx of visitors increases every year and will continue to do so. So with the addition of new attractions, the Rock Spring property is more valuable to us because it is a refuge from this vehicular activity, and we very much want to, wanted to remain as open as possible. You reference to the county's interest in acquiring the property would have, that would have adverse consequences because we would lose control and we would not be able to do some of the things that have been suggested or complimented. control by the county would tie our hands, would take the control away from us, would put our government further away from us. There is no question that it will be, there will be an impact on our taxes. It's a fact of life. But if we can preserve and enhance our open spaces-
Your time is up.
I'm almost done. Space for the use of the community, I believe it will be money well spent. The residents are here tonight to hear your views on funding of this acquisition. I hope you take the time to listen and consider their opinions as well as your own. Now, have you inquired of the Board of Education of the increase in that they would incur in costs as a result of development of this process? You make arguments, but where are the facts? You have no facts. All you have is dialogue. And you will deprive the residents of West Orange of the best open space in the county and maybe even the state. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. No, yeah. Good evening.
Good evening. So-
Name and address, please?
Sure. Leana, my wife told me, reminded me to do that also. My name is Leana DeChico. I live at 42 Undercliff Terrace South. So here we go. I've actually had the opportunity to speak with all of you on town council, expressing my support of the acquisition of Rock Spring by the township. As a vote tonight will have a significant impact on the community, I would like to take this time to address some reservations of our council members may have moving forward with the purchase. I'd like to note, Councilman Krokowiak, you've obviously had a busy day because you and I have had two separate conversations discussing these points. So I apologize, Councilwomen, if they are redundant, but I feel that they should be heard. I know there is a lot of concern regarding the town's budget and the financial implications of this acquisition. However, I ask you to look at this purchase as acquiring an asset and an investment rather than simply a debt. How can we ask families to move and buy homes here? Or tell businesses to open here if we aren't willing, if we aren't investing in our land and our community ourselves? Sorry. If we aren't adding value to our town, if we aren't investing in our future, how can we expect other people to do the same? Many of us are familiar with borrowing monies and having to pay it back with interest. We have mortgages, some of us, unfortunately. It's a risk, it's an investment, and it's what we do for our families to add to our quality of life. Just a note about me. I am a risk mitigation consultant for one of the largest organizations in the world. Although my good genes don't make me look like I am that experienced, I am. I look at pros and cons and assess value almost every single day. I understand your concerns, but I can confidently say that the town purchasing Rock Spring would actually mitigate more risk than it would cause. We are not weighing the alternative consequence of overdevelopment heavily enough. If this ordinance does not pass tonight, it is a very real possibility, almost a certainty, that this land will be sold to private developers. I ask you, what are we going to do then? How will the town handle 14-plus, 1,400 families plus? That's a low estimate. How are we going to handle 2,000-plus additional children in our already overcrowded schools? How are we going to accommodate easily 2,000 more cars on our roads? We are talking about an apartment village spanning 138 acres in the middle of a residential town. It is a village in itself. Northfield Avenue is already heavily congested, especially in the warmer months due to the Essex County recreational facility. What's going to happen when people start avoiding Northfield and looking for alternate routes on our residential streets? I can tell you, they're going to do the same thing I do. They're going to avoid Northfield. They're going to go to Gregory Avenue, Walker Road, Burnett Terrace. They're going to go into residential streets in St. Cloud, and they're going to try, and they're going to inundate our residential areas. We are going to become a parking lot. You want a quality of life? You're going to be sitting in your cars. And I don't even want to, and it's just dangerous. We have schools on these roads, right on Gregory Avenue. We have children playing in these streets, not to mention the hills that already cause blind spots and represent a hazard as they are. And this is just in regards to traffic. This does not even scratch the surface of the toll that this will take on our infrastructure and the quality of life that people expect when they live in West Orange. I moved here with a certain quality of life in mind. I would like my town council to preserve and to protect that. West Orange needs to remain a community with integrity that protects its residents and its history. I have to hurry up, I'm sorry. The vote tonight is not only a preventative measure to avoid development, but it's also our first step in preserving open space, which we desperately need. I know there is a lot of concern for post-purchase plans, but we have to get there first. Without this vote, we cannot move forward. We won't even have the option to discuss future plans. It'll just be off the table. If you don't like the idea of public works, if you don't support the 55 and older active community or recreational facility or anything besides open space, hear me, I am with you. I am with you. But the town and the community need to make those decisions together and not leave that up for developers who without a doubt will rip our community apart.
Your time is up.
Can I cede someone else's time? Cede your time. See, I got more time. I'm sorry. But the town and the community need to make those decisions together and not leave that up to developers who without a doubt will rip our land apart, not leaving us one square inch, okay? We don't, we are better than the ultimatum of all or nothing. We are better than this. At the very least, we can avoid 138 acres of large residential development, and that is no small feat. That is something to be proud of. If we can even block, if we can block any amount of private development, if we can even have 100 acres, that is something to be proud of. There's also a misconception that the people coming forward are doing so because it will be impacted directly. However, I can tell you this is not entirely true. I don't have children in the West Orange School District yet, hopefully soon, but 61% of my taxes go to that said system, and I am proud of that. I'm proud of that because I support the bigger picture and the vision for West Orange's future. I ask you to share that vision with me. I strongly believe that with council, our administration, and most importantly, most importantly, community input, we can make something special for all the residents to enjoy for decades to come. Let's live up to our town motto. Let's be innovative. Let's be proactive in that innovation rather than reactive to a disaster. I want to end on a positive note and tell council how impressed I am with their communication. I have reached out and either spoken or received personalized responses from each of you. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for the extra time. I hope some of my points have resonated with you and that we can work closely together in the future. To my neighbors, if you also support this vote, I ask that you come forward tonight because there's no going back on this measure. It's all or nothing.
Thank you, Council President Garino, members of the town council, Mayor Parisi, and representatives of the administration. I brought here tonight with me the original handwritten minutes of the first-ever meeting of the newly-formed West Orange Township Municipal Government from April 18, 1863. To give that date perspective, these notes were taken at the meeting that occurred about two and a half months before the Battle of Gettysburg during the American Civil War. That first meeting took place at the St. Mark's School that once sat near 80 Main Street, where a historical signpost now marks that location. I wanted to bring the history of that moment, 156 years ago, to this moment at the present day where history can also be made. The similarity between the two moments is worth mentioning. The first town commission of 1863 had a vision for the township of West Orange and what it could become. The critics of that day said that the West Orange experiment would never work. And before long, the town would return to orange. But the West Orange commissioners were steadfast and confident of the future they could build. Tonight, we find ourselves at the crossroads on the journey of that dream that began in 1863 as a new vision awaits us on the horizon. Let the history of this moment not be lost upon us. If the town commissioners of 1863 could return, they would pause in amazement of what West Orange has become since they last seen it. They would find a thriving community that was transformed from rural farmland into a modern municipality. Even their critics would be astonished at what has been accomplished. Although their voices have long been silenced by the march of time, these handwritten notes symbolically bring their presence here today. Let their dream continue in a way that would do them proud. I urge you to consider to not let Rock Spring fall into the abyss of forgotten places or relegated to the scrap heap of history. Our time together is short, but the consequences of our actions are long-reaching and will impact those who come after us. In the end, the final verdict upon ourselves will be the lasting legacy we leave tomorrow's generation, just as the vision of 1863 left upon us. Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Mayor Parisi, council members and everything else. My name is Norman Scrivener, and I live in Barringer Court between Northfield and Walker. I'm here with my other board members, Mr. Goldberg, Mr. Hark, Mrs. Hark, and Ms. Block. And we live right on the northwest corner of the golf course. And we have a very pleasant view of deers and golf, people walking around all the time everywhere. So we're very much in favor of the purchase of that property by the town. And part of, without going into a lot of details, which I don't have because this is the first meeting I've been to and the first meeting that we've really been aware of what's going on because it's happened very quickly. But as a long-term resident of West Orange, I've been here 40 years altogether, and I've seen a lot of things taking place. One of those examples was the Turtleback Zoo, which back in 1980, when I first started to have children, was almost on the verge of disappearing. Today, it is a destination point for a lot of people from all over our northeast corridor and everything else to come and see it. And I think that if we have some visions, we could make that property into a destination for people from the northeast area to come and see, whether it be a playground, a recreation center, walks, cherry blossom trees in, you know, to, not to compete with the other parts. But, you know, it can be a lot of things that are done with it. And I'd much rather look out on a golf course, even though again, an occasional ball comes over and hits my sunlights and everything else. But I'd much rather look at that than I would a lot of, a lot more houses. So we're all, I believe I can say on behalf of us that we're all in favor of this and that we would like, you know, if we can join in some discussions with it along the way. As I say, there's 20 units there, so we have a group of people. One other quick note, and thinking of the library discussions earlier on, this makes, this look like a very long course of what's been going on. And I recognize the council with the Edison Complex and everything else who've taken on some major projects that have taken and benefited the town. And as I said, I've been here a resident for 40, 40 years. And I've seen a lot of council members, a lot of mayors, and a lot of people in going through. And I just want to compliment the whole crew of you and thank you for your dedication to it. Because I know it's not an easy task, what you do when you're sitting out there. And I think it's very good that you have the conversations with each other, that you don't always agree with each other and that you can, you know, and this is what makes, in my opinion, for a good council. So thank you very much, and we're for it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Now, you, Ms.? Did you raise your, you raised, yes. Oh, that's Megan. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Megan Delmonico, and I live at 9 Rock Spring Road. My son asked if he could actually speak on our behalf, so I'm going to defer to him. So this is my eight-year-old son, Julius Hammer.
I have a dog, and we really like to walk her often. And I like to play catch with my mom when we walk her. So I like to, like, run and do crazy tricks when I catch the ball. And I want to make sure that we can be safe, like, when I make the insane moves or like flip or something, that I'm not going to turn around and get hit by a car.
So what are you asking for?
So I'm hoping that you vote yes on building a park in the end of Rock Spring.
So, yeah, we very much are in support of the purchase and appreciate, again, all of you taking the time to, I think, entertain all of our questions over the last few weeks. But again, I think my son said it best, but please do what's right on behalf of our community for not only this little one, but for those to come. Thank you.
In the very back, Lissa? You missed. Yes, ma'am. I think maybe we should get name tags for people, like. Right? Get name tags for people like you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Millie Reed, and I've been a resident of West Orange for 27 years. My husband and I live on Rock Spring Road. And having lived in West Orange for 27 years, I've seen a lot of change- And having lived in West Orange for 27 years, I've seen a lot of changes, most of them good, some of them bad. But we are also seniors, and we understand that you can't stand in the way of progress. We also understand that property values depend on a good educational system, the amenities in the community, the access of that community to public transportation, and how it treats its residents, children, and seniors. With that said, I would like to speak for my husband and I that we are very much in favor of the acquisition of the Montclair Golf Club. We know that we have been suffering from the amount of traffic that has occurred since the opening of the complex at Turtleback Zoo. I think it was last year or the year before, there were over 800,000 visitors, and that's good for the township, not so good for the local residents, because, like someone said, you have to find a way of getting around. When our daughter needed to go to work and she needed to use Northfield Road, she had to find another way of getting out of our area, and it took her more than half an hour to do that. So it has added to the amount of time that she is in traffic. Because of all of this, also, our town has grown tremendously since 9/11, and a proof of that has been that we had to build a new middle school, Liberty Middle School, where we're in right now. But like I said, that's progress, and we have to address all our needs. I'm just hoping that you take into consideration all those things that I've said, not just what we have experienced, but what other people have experienced, and the reason why they moved to West Orange, like I did 27 years ago. I moved here because I absolutely loved the area. I love the fact that it is very diverse geographically. I love the fact that we have good neighbors, and it really helps to have a fantastic view of New York City. However, I really would love to see a green space. Like someone said before, we don't have that much green space in town, and that is one of the things that people look for, for quality of life. Also, I would love everyone here on the panel to really take a look seriously at the traffic patterns. We have been victims of car crashes on our property, and it's not even on Northfield. It was just the amount of traffic that was coming in and out of the club. So I am hoping that when all is said and done, hopefully, we will have the green space and we will not have any access from Rock Spring Road. Thank you.
Ms., before you leave, can you please spell your name so the town clerk can get your proper spelling?
M. as in Mary, I-L-L-Y, Reed, R-E-E-D.
Good evening.
Hi.
Please, please spell your name.
My name is Holly, with an H. Williamson is the last name. I live at 17 Rock Spring Road. First, I wanted to thank all of the council members. I have reached out to every one of you, as has my husband, David Stocknoff, and many of our neighbors who are here with us here tonight. So thank you for listening to all of our concerns over the last couple of months. I've been a resident on Rock Spring Road and in West Orange for the last six years. I'm not going to be nearly as eloquent as some of the other speakers here this evening. I'm going to make it short and sweet, but I do want to express our support for the town's purchase of the club and the property there. In the age of artificial intelligence, computers, there's nothing better than to have a little bit of green space where we can escape to, and I believe that this is a great opportunity to preserve the natural beauty in our community. I feel strongly that if West Orange can purchase this land, it's better than to have it in the hands of a developer. If we purchase the land, if the town purchased the land, we have control over what can happen. If the land does not stay in our control, there will be 1,400 condominiums and other Essex Green in my backyard, and I did not buy into that when I moved to this wonderful community. It would be a burden on our schools, the town services, and traffic. I urge all of you to vote yes for this, so that we can have an amazing outdoor space and the entire community can take a part of it. Thank you.
I'm going to be, I'm sorry, Lauren Svetvillas.
Spell it, Lauren, spell it, please, the last name.
S-V-E-T-V-I-L-A-S, on Prospect Avenue. I'm really close to Northfield. I'm familiar with the property. I'm going to be really quick. My public comment's not towards the town council this evening, it's really towards the public. And I've been in town almost 17 years. I've spoken in front of the town council and the planning board, the zoning board, the Public Safety Advisory Board, and all these different commissions, and I have one suggestion. And I started an organization with some friends here in town to protect as much green space and as many trees as we can, because that's our job as a resident. This is our neighborhood, this is our community, and we can't leave it up, no offense, we can't leave it up to people that are elected or appointed, it's really up to us to be loud and be voiceless and to come out and speak. So what I'm going to say, from experience, trying to save the forest that used to stand where Seton Hall Prep's practice fields are, is come out. This is the beginning of the journey. You've got zoning board meetings, planning board meetings. Go to www.westorange.org, that's the town's website. They have their own calendar. You can download and have the calendar sent right to your phone, and you can see when the zoning board meetings are, the planning board meetings are, the agendas, see everything that's happening. So you can come out and you can speak and you can advocate for what you want. If you want to see development there, that's great, go for it. But I think we need to keep this place as green as possible, Rock Spring Country Club, really, every square inch, no DPW, no, and maybe we'll hear about an animal shelter going there now. We don't know, but we need to advocate for keeping that space as green as possible. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I'm sorry? Oh. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Hi, Suzanne Pennell, 27 Fairview Avenue. I've already corresponded with our council members, and I so appreciate your responses. I really do. I know you've probably had a lot, so I do appreciate it. And for the mayor, thank you so much for the opportunities to listen to you speak and explain the necessity of acting on this. Sometimes things come up. We just had to replace our water heater three days ago, didn't think we had to, and guess what? We did, because sometimes you have to do things that are for the betterment of your family, your home, your health, your cleanliness, your community. You have to do things sometimes that may be a little difficult budgetary-wise, but in the long run, they will be so positive. I'll see the rest of my time speaking for a young man who spent most of his life in West Orange and who is right now in port in Bahrain on a Navy ship, and he has said that he has disallowed his parents from selling our home. He has every intention of coming back to West Orange someday, and because of that, he loves this town dearly, loves that neighborhood, had a lot of friends in the area, spent a lot of time there, to preserve it for his generation and those to come, to preserve it for those who are already there, to preserve it for just the history and the heritage in our town. The view is beautiful. I actually finally saw it. I got to go to the country club. It is phenomenal. If that clubhouse were available to be used for anything by community members, I would be in line to host anything. I'd host my own birthday party just to be there again. It's gorgeous. But the neighborhood, it's so important to preserve. I appreciate very much Ridgeway Park in the neighborhood near my home, because it is a quiet, beautiful little treasure in our neighborhood that we can walk to. I would just like to say again, on behalf of my son, please vote yes. It's important for West Orange yesterday and now and tomorrow. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just here in the capacity, as a resident, as many of you know me as the head basketball coach and also educator at West Orange High School. When I heard that this vote was going to pass ...
Can you spell?
Oh, I'm sorry. Demond Cowens, 31 Buckingham Road, of course, West Orange. I'm sorry. D-E-M-O-N-D, last name C-O-W-I-N-S. I sat back and listened to many of our residents, and something stood out, and it was the quality of life for our community. And seeing our young, our kids every day, this would be an opportunity for our youth to have another place to go and enjoy West Orange. I've been living here for about five years now, and I had to tell you that West Orange has been the best place I've ever lived, and I've lived all over the world. And I have a two-year-old, and I would love my two-year-old to have the opportunity to go see those beautiful views, be able to do different recreational things at the Rock Spring Country Club. So I'm all for the president to preserve the Rock Spring Country Club. Thank you very much.
Whoever wants to speak next, come down and can stand behind this gentleman. Good evening.
Hi, Eric Applegate, 5 West Road.
Can you please spell your last name?
Applegate, just like it sounds.
That's funny.
I had a bunch of prepared remarks, but my fellow townspeople have been much more eloquent than I could ever be. I've heard people tonight and on some of the other occasions who have been in this town for 40 years, 27 years. My wife and I have lived here now a little over 16 weeks, so we're fairly new to the township, but we love it, and I think I mentioned that at the last town council meeting. The arguments, I think, that have been made tonight about keeping control of the process are key, giving ourselves the time to come up with a well-thought-out, reasonable, and fully accountable plan for what we do with the property. And I think the plan put forward to say, let's buy it, let's run it as a golf course for a couple of years, and develop the plan in a reasonable, accountable way with the full input of the community. The only other point I'd make tonight is, I was at the information session at Rock Spring Club, and they were very well-attended. I don't know exactly how many people we had, but probably close to 100 or more people were there from across the entire community, not just the neighborhood, but across the community. I was at the last town council meeting where we talked about this, and people came up and spoke. And tonight, I have yet to hear a single resident not in favor of purchasing the property. And I think in terms of ceding to the will of the people, clearly, you need to take that into consideration. No one has come up here and said, no, don't do this. Now, obviously, we want to do this in a thoughtful, fiscally-responsible manner, but also, I think the entire community is in favor of doing this, so I urge you, please, vote yes.
Good evening. Please spell your name.
Yes, my name is Khabira Myers, and it's spelled K-H-A-B-I-R-A-H. My last name is Myers, M-Y-E-R-S. I've been a resident of West Orange for almost five years. I live on Marion Drive, and I'm also a newly-appointed board member of the West Orange Trent Leveling Board. It's obvious that the majority of the people here in attendance want the purchase of Rock Spring. Our concern, I think, from listening today, is that we will have assurances that the Rock Spring purchase will be utilized for what it's intended for. So my question is, what assurances do we have that in fact, Rock Spring will be maintained as an open space and as a recreational facility? My suggestion is that this town behooves itself to apply for green acres funding, because that is our assurance that Rock Spring will indeed remain an open space. It behooves our town to apply for green acres funding. Now, since I'm up here, I just want to touch on one other thing. It was brought to my attention that my friend, James Oliphant, was mentioned, because he was killed by a car in Rooney Circle about two or three weeks ago. This town needs more sidewalks, and it does not cease to amaze me how few sidewalks there are in this town. James Oliphant was my neighbor and my friend. He was a community organizer like me and a pillar to this community, and he was a senior citizen, and he was also athletic like me, and we both would literally run into each other on the street in West Orange, because there are no sidewalks in our neighborhood. I am literally running on the street several times a week, almost getting hit by a car because there are no sidewalks. When is this, how many more people have to die before this town installs more sidewalks? My son and his friends have to play in the street, because there is no park that is walking distance. I think that it behooves us, if we're to be an environmentally conscious township, along with utilizing Rock Spring for its intended purpose as an open space, we need to install more sidewalks in this community. There should be no more lives lost because there are no sidewalks, or there is no adequate amount of sidewalks in this town. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. Hi.
My name is Susan Kinsella-Pusquale. I live at 22 Overlook Avenue in West Orange. I'm a longtime resident of West Orange. I lived here for over 45 years. I also have three children currently in the West Orange school system, and I think this would be a great opportunity for the town to purchase Rock Spring. I've reached out to all of you on the council members, and I'm asking you to please vote for the purchase of this. For West Orange to have a beautiful recreation spring, space like Rock Spring, and to be able to control the development of any portion, it would be a smart, positive investment for the community moving forward. I am asking you once again to please vote yes. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lisa Block. I live on 301 Barringer Court.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name and spell it, please, for the council?
Sure. Lisa, L-I-S-A, Block, like building block. I thank the public. This is my first public meeting. I moved to West Orange from Maplewood four years ago, in part because of the amazing parkland that I back, facing Rock Spring and adjacent at the county system, and I've learned a tremendous amount from all the thoughtful, intelligent people here and from you as well. We don't have all the facts, and I think, you know, I also would want assurances about what the that would protect a large amount of the open space. I just want to add that I believe that there are serious environmental considerations, given what Rock Spring holds in terms of stormwater, just water. We live below it by grade, and there is a stream or creek, and water is a big issue. And I think development could be disastrous just in terms of water. Obviously, having open space, we know from an environmental perspective, is just critical in this time we live in to keep oxygen and all the other good stuff that nature will bring in terms of heat and all that. So with, in terms of the facts, I just ask that you really think seriously about the environmental issues that also should be thought, considered. Thank you.
My name is Tony Castellino. I live at 34 Valley Way. I'm a lifelong resident of West Orange. I've seen the community change over years, for some of the good things and some of the bad things. In regards to the Rock Spring purchase, selfishly, I am an avid golfer, and I would love to see it stay an 18-hole golf course forever. I've had the pleasure of playing that course more than a handful of times. It's very enjoyable, but, you know, that may not be the avenue for the town. I was at the Rock Spring event when the mayor spoke on some of the possibilities, what can be done with that area, and he touched on things that would help the entire community, a sports facility for the children of the community, a 55-and-over community for the seniors, potential DPW, open space, a walking park, so everybody could benefit from the purchase of this property. And those things aside, as the mayor talked about earlier about the library situation, there's a process. None of those things come to fruition, and they're just on the table as talking points. But if the purchase isn't made, none of those things can happen. At this point, we're talking about just the purchase of the property, 138 acres in Essex County. We all know the value of real estate and property in Essex County. So I see this as an investment, not an expenditure for the community, and that $12 million bond would be put out there as, again, as I said, an investment. The mayor outlined a few situations where you could sell parcels of that property. So the idea of gaining control over whether it's a two-year, three-year, whatever the period is, as we see how the golf course can generate some funds for us over the next couple of years, while the town considers some of the ideas and some of the possibilities that can be done with that to help the entire community, both the youth as well as the seniors and everybody in between. We've heard a lot of concerns from the community tonight, and everybody touched on things that are very important, you know, traffic concerns. I know I have a concern about having over 1,000 units and all the cars and traffic and children that that'll bring to the community, along with the possibility behind the Pleasantale Chateau with another 500, 600, 700 units going up there, and the traffic and children that that'll bring to the community. You know, we're talking about a lot of congestion, and I'm not looking forward to that by any means. But at this point, as I said, the first step here is to make the purchase, make the investment in the property in West Orange and the green space, whether that be preserved as a golf course, green space, walking park, et cetera. We need to make the purchase first so we can make that decision and leave that to our administration and our council to determine what it is we're going to do with that space with the input of the community. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Tom Edwards, and I live at 26 Rock Spring Road. I had the... I'm just getting over a cold and something, so it might not be good. I emailed most of the council people, all the council people, and the mayor, and yesterday I received, I think, the email that our advocate Grossman referred to from one of the council people. Kabo... I can't say it. Yes, I still can't pronounce it, sorry. The thing that I wanted to address is that there were a number of negatives in this particular email that we haven't talked about this evening, some dealing with finances and other things. One of the items was the Green Acres Fund, which was mentioned just a few minutes ago. And he brought up that we have a municipal open space tax, and that tax rate right now is too low. To correct that, we need to raise another $150,000 against the town population of 48,000, which boils down to roughly $3 a person. The bond ordinance will increase the town debt, but we heard in the meeting of February 19th that even with the level that it goes up to, it will only be 2/3 of the, I guess, the maximum guideline that we heard from the state. So we're well within that range. Another negative was that if things don't work out, the town will have control of the land. In so many words, the town will have control of the land. We, not the county or anyone else, can decide what to do. The last, the last negative almost knocked me over. This one was, reading from the email, let's just say the proposal, proposes to sell 15 acres, projecting a sale price of $7.5 million, which would be income, and when developed with housing, would generate more than $1.5 million in tax revenues per year. We are trying to make up just over 500 million. So the $1.5 million with that small parcel would bring us nearly $1 million a year against, or in combination with, $7.5 million that we get from the sale. So, back to Mr. Grossman's point, is where are the facts? Where are these negatives? If this, if this is a negative, we should all be so fortunate. So, anyway, I'm strongly in favor of the purchase. Thank you very much.
Nice, nice and good. Good evening, Sally.
Hello again. Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road. I am in favor of the preservation of open space. If we're going to spend money on anything in West Orange, open space would be my favorite choice. So if we can preserve as much as you're saying you feel you can, Mayor Parisi, I would be very happy about that. There's a lot of beautiful big trees on that property, and I would hope that we would add to those and clean up the environmental problem, as golf courses are known to be doused with a lot of chemicals, so that would be something that we would have to work on as I also want to mention to the people that are here that on Saturday, there is a tour of West Orange's potential open spaces, and it starts in the morning at 10:00 a.m. Everyone can meet at the town hall, the municipal parking lot, and as part of the master plan preparations, there's a tour of any other available open space. So I also would hope that this purchase of the property, and I've heard that it's the case, that it would not use up all of our open space trust fund monies, that we would still have some left for the other spaces that we have, the smaller spaces in town. And for those of us who mentioned that there's a, issues with traffic on North Field and so on, yes, 175 units will still contribute to traffic, but the zoo is creating the worst traffic. And I'd like to mention that tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. at the zoo in the conference center, there is a meeting with the head of the Essex County Parks Department to talk about the zoo expansion. In West Orange, we continue to ask for a master plan from the zoo, and they continue to not give it to us. But there will be an opportunity. I will be there at 5:00 o'clock. I hope others who live on North Field or near North Field and are concerned about the traffic will come and speak to Dan Salvanti, the head of the Turtle Bag Zoo. So thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate the opportunity to add more open space to West Orange. It's very exciting. Thank you.
Good evening.
Give your name and address and spell your last name, please, sir.
It's Michael Pitogo, P-I-T-O-G-O, and the address is 41 Rock Spring Road. The club is actually my neighbor. We get a lot of, we get a lot of free tennis balls from the club. It's coming over the fence, but I just want to say I'm in support of the town and giving us the ability to control our future. I grew up in New York City, and I know what a concrete jungle is like, and I escaped that by moving to West Orange, and the greenery and the trees and everything that's around the neighborhood, the zoo. So, you know, with, with that in mind, I just want to make sure that, you know, first and foremost, greenery is what we're trying to preserve here, and supporting the bond measure is something that I'm for, as well as everybody, everybody here and all of the other residents. So please take that into consideration, give us the power to decide the future of what happens at Rock Spring Club and my neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Joan McCartney, 22 Collmore Terrace, West Orange, in case anybody wanted to...
You want to spell it?
That is my wife.
You want to spell it?
Yeah. For 16 years, I've been on the Open Space Commission in West Orange, chairman for the last 10. Our last meeting, we voted unanimously to purchase this property. And I know when we voted to purchase this property, we also knew we had to pay for the property. So the only way to pay for it right now would be to get a bond. So unless somebody has a different way to pay for it, we do have open space money. In the future, we could use that open space money and apply it to it. Also, just a little background, in my 16 years, we've been able to collect, well, purchase 27 acres of town. That's in 16 years. This is 138 acres, which is not going to wait for purchase, so it's not like we could save money in our piggy bank to buy it down the road. You know, and even the per-acre price is reasonable. I averaged out what we spent. We spent averages $129,815 per acre for the, for the acres we've bought. This, I did some, some rough math, which I think are wrong now because I had extra 10 acres, but... Yeah, it's maybe $90,000 an acre. So it, it's a good price, all right? And I know some of the concerns were that we may not be able to get green acres funding. But, you know, like in my 16 years on open space, we've never been denied. We've never been denied. It's 138 acres in a densely populated part of the town, and I just couldn't imagine the state saying, no, that's not a good investment. You know, everybody gave all the, all the good parts about getting it, so I'm not going to kick that dead horse. Okay, I'm out. Bye.
You could have came with Sally, and we didn't have to take the names down twice.
I, I, I don't know if actually, if I'm going to be leaving with her after what I say now. Mr. Applegate, you're about to get your wish. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road. Mr. Applegate, you may not know me, you've only been in town a short period of time, but my wife and I led an effort to preserve trees at the Seton Hall Athletic Field property a number of years ago that involved 26 hearings over two years, and involved a land use attorney, a stormwater engineer, an environmental engineer, an old-growth forest expert, actually two of them, an expert on the gardens of Frederick Law Olmsted and the Olmsted Brothers, Olmsted Sons, and also Mr. Fagan here, who was our historian. So we fought long and hard to preserve the old-growth trees on that land, and also involved a lawsuit. So also, Rose DeSenna was the zoning board secretary, so she can attest to how challenging the battle was. So I think that we have pretty good bona fides in terms of our being concerned about the environment and the preservation of open space. However, with Rock Spring, we're not just buying land, we're buying a business, and I think that that's what people are losing sight of. We're buying a business, and we do not know the financial statements of that business. Those have not been provided. So we don't know if operating Rock Spring as a golf course is going to make us $100,000 a year, as the township says it will, or if we will lose 100, or 200, or 300, or 400, or whatever the number is, because we don't know, we haven't seen the financials. We're being told that those financials are proprietary, but in my more than 35 years of practicing law, I've never been in a business transaction involving the acquisition of a business in which there were no financial statements available to the buyer. I think that we also have to be concerned about what is going to happen with those 12 to 18 acres of land that the township intends to use for development. Now, Mayor Parisi earlier said that he doesn't like selling property to the highest bidder. So if that is the case, is that parcel of 12 to 18 acres going to be declared an area in need of redevelopment? Is it going to be considered functionally obsolete, the way the public library is considered functionally obsolete? And is that property then going to be sold to a redeveloper under the redevelopment area law? We really don't know. It's admirable to want to preserve Rock Spring as a golf club or open space or something, but right now, we don't have a plan, we don't know how much this is going to cost us, and until we do, we should forego purchasing the property. Thank you.
Good evening, Jerry. Don Pennell, 27 Fairview Avenue, West Orange. I just want to say that I am 100% in favor of the acquisition of the land by West Orange. And what I really want to hear, and I just heard a little glimpse of it just, just now, is there anyone here who is against this? And if you are, would you come up to the microphone and tell us why you are against it? Because my perception of this room is almost 100% for it, or at least from what I just heard, 99% for this. I would like to know. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I continue the parade of spouses of council members coming to speak, and it's just appropriate that I follow Mr. Pennell because I want to speak about the fact that while I have been advocating... fact that while I have been advocating publicly on social media since the announcement that Montclair Golf Course was going to put this property up for sale, I've been advocating for it to be preserved as open space. But I am not in support of this proposal because there is no guarantee that most of the property will be preserved as open space. At the February 19th council meeting, the mayor talked about many ideas for the 138 acres. A lot of it was not preserving it as open space, reducing the golf course to nine holes. And that question is whether that will be viable long-term, that is a real question. Selling all 15 to 18 acres for a 55-plus community, relocating the public works garage there, which I don't think has any correlation to open space, and building perhaps an indoor turf field and other buildings. Over and over again, he insisted that these were just ideas and not definite plans. The only definite we have heard is that the township, if purchases the property, plans to hire an outside firm to run it as an 18-hole public golf course for the next two years. And then, at that point, two years down the road, determine what to do with the property. In fact, Mr. Trank revealed at the February 19th meeting that the partnership discussions with the county broke off due to the fact that the town wanted the county to agree to run the course for two years and then allow the township the option to reevaluate use of the property after that. I think the county would be an excellent partner, but after hearing that, I understand why they didn't want to go for it. We have, I understand, I agree with everyone in this room about the beauty of this property and how much it needs to be preserved. But since this all has been introduced, I have run into countless number of people at ShopRite walking my dog outside the church parking lot who express the same concerns that I have. All of us want all, or almost all of the property, to be preserved as open space. But we are concerned that, given this situation, we have no idea what may happen two years down the road. The other thing that I'd like to raise at this point is there is a financial impact. And I totally agree. I am in support of having the county buy the property and will have that financial impact of losing the tax revenue, but we will know that that property will be maintained as open space. So, we have to look at the fact that if the township purchases this property, what is the financial impact for us? I recall that more than one council member has stated previously that they would not vote to approve this ordinance without first seeing the 2019 budget. We have a number of issues outstanding already about the budget, and this $12 million bond has got to have a financial impact. So, I ask, has the council been given a draft of the budget yet? And if not, as much as I would like to see this property maintained as open space and not sold to a developer, I really believe it's irresponsible of council members to vote on such a big-ticket item without seeing what our budget looks like. Finally, what I would recommend is that we vote down the ordinance tonight and allow the county to re-enter the negotiating process. I believe a plan that includes the county would result in total preservation of this beautiful piece of land and, in the end, be the best solution for all. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this ordinance? Yes, Mr. Rekia, good evening.
I don't feel there should be a joint venture.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Nick Rekia.
I'm here.
Excuse me?
Your address?
100 Winding Way.
Thank you.
I don't feel there should be a joint venture. I think the town should... My opinion, the town should purchase this. There was only two people that, you know, rebutted this. Out of all these people here, only two. So, I think, for the good of the town and residents, unless it was in their backyard, okay, or very close to them, I guess they'd have a different opinion. So, I would suggest, I can't, you know, make up your mind, but it would be for the good of the town to purchase this solely and not with anybody else. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
I'm not a great speaker, Jerry.
Jane?
Good evening.
Jane Brick, 19 Colony Drive West. We moved here in 1973. We've been here over 45 years. We love it here. And one of the things that Michael and I enjoy doing very much is walking. And we would walk from Gregory and Northfield, up Northfield, and we'd get as far as the country club. The country club, whether we play golf or not, has always been restricted. So, we never had the opportunity to play golf there, even if we wanted to. And we never had the opportunity to walk through the property. We saw the restaurant there that country club members enjoy, and it's a view like High Lawn Pavilion, which is one in a million as well. We turned around and looked at the property and said, "Wow, this is like being in Maine or New Hampshire. There's a lake, it's rolling grounds, it's absolutely magnificent." I have faith in all of you and know most of you. I truly believe that you will figure this all out for the benefit of all of us. To me, this is a dream come true, to be able to enjoy this property that I've admired for 45 years.
Mike Brick, B-R-I-C-K, Like Stone, 19 Colony Drive West, West Orange, for 45 years. And I'm chairman of the Environmental Commission, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. I know my environmental buddies would all vote to preserve this land if we did a vote for it, but we have not done a formal vote. Environmentalists will tell you, "You've got to be crazy not to preserve this land." How to preserve it in the best way financially, our mayor and his administration have come up with a plan that makes perfect sense to me. I was trained in finance and economics. I know the plan has a bond section. I know that there's a sell-off. I know that there's a tax structure that will be ongoing for this land, and the bond will be liquidated in probably five, six, seven years. It will not affect the town budget, and I vehemently would debate that with anyone who says on the council that this is a town budget problem. What I see is people who don't have faith in our administration. We have elected officials that have the best interests of West Orange at heart. You will never know the exact details of a plan. Kevin says we'll lose a couple of hundred thousand bucks running the golf course. Big deal if we do, and we probably won't. So, this is a decision not based on economic terms, it's based on really the spiritual nature of how you consider West Orange now and going forward. If we lose this land, we will never recover it. If we don't take control of the land with our own government, we don't have, we will not know how to plan its future. I grew up in Livingston in 1953, and there was farms in that town. And we traveled through those dirt roads on that farm in a pony cart with my friends. I saw millions of trees, and I saw open land, and I saw it carved up into little paracels where people can live, and it's a detriment to our environment. Why do we want open land? It's spiritually and healthily needed for our people, for our human species. There's a million reasons I could give you why open land is important. But one of the things I can tell you is it should be preserved because, as Jane said, if you walk that land at sunset and you look at the New York skyline, it's magic. That New York skyline lights up and it looks golden, and we're the only town in the entire area that has this ridge line. That's not the only reason to buy this land, but it's one of the most amazing spiritual reasons to buy the land. And I applaud every citizen who got up today and said that they feel in their guts that this land has to be preserved. The Environmental Commission will take a vote on it and will present it to the board, and I'm sure it would be preserve the land. And just think, if you don't vote to preserve the land, then whoever votes against it will be a pariah because our taxes in this town will go up because the land will be developed, and it will be developed in a way that will negatively impact this town for the future moving forward. The only other thing I can say to the board when they're taking this vote, you have an opportunity right now to preserve open spaces in this town for the next hundreds of years. If you don't take this vote now and the land is sold to a developer, we lose control of it because they will want to create a high-density solution and we're going to increase our tax base. Why would anyone want to do that who loves this town? I present that to you, and I hope you will vote to pass this very reasonable bond issue, control the land, and preserve our town for the future. Thank you.
Vivian Demas, D-E-M-A-S, 9 Spring Hill Drive. And I may forget names, but Mr. Pennell asked for people to come up to object so we could hear what their concerns were. And we had two people. Mr. Malanga, a lawyer, I agree. I don't understand this proprietary aspect of their runnings and their books, but when you're holding on to something that people are going to jump and buy no matter what, you can be a pain in the ass and not give to somebody asking a reasonable question the books. The question then becomes, what's the downside to the purchase? The downside to the purchase is, maybe we'll have to sell it or part of it and not be able to keep it pristine like, and I don't remember the name of the woman who is concerned about what you guys are going to do once you have the property two years down the road. Purchasing with the information, without the information, what we know is if we don't do it, it will be bought. And those people won't care about the books because they're going to look at what they can do to the land. And what they can do to the land is not in our best interest as a township. So, the second part is, what do you guys do with the land? We're part of that decision-making process. That we can have control over because we can be here to make sure it goes the way we all want it to go, which is, I hope I'm speaking for everyone, being realistic, that the vast majority of it stays open space. That if we're going to build on it and run a business on it to get back lost tax dollars, that we can control how much of it we're going to lose and how much we can reasonably, efficiently, responsibly turn into money for the township. And one of the things that concerns me is, I don't want this two-year plan to be written in stone. It's a reasonable thing to say, "Give it a shot, let's see if we can live with it. Let's explore the reality of what other things we can do," keeping in mind our township and our citizens' use of it. And one of the things I kept saying to Cindy was, "It is just like High Lawn Pavilion, but it better not turn into High Lawn Pavilion where nobody can afford in this town to go eat there." So, you know, and a dream would be a rooftop restaurant there. That would be spectacular, and it would certainly create a tax base. So, Mr. Malanga, you're right. Why won't they give up the books? Because they don't have to. Somebody's going to buy it anyway. Is it going to be us and we can control our destiny? Or is it going to be a group of developers that are going to put 1,400, 800, whatever it is, and tax our school system, create sewer issues, create road problems, create more traffic problems? That is not acceptable. And while it would be nice to have those books, we're buying something that we know we're not going to lose value with. So, it's an investment. Is it a prudent investment? I think it is.
Everybody who's involved in public speaking knows that there's always an opening statement that has to grab everybody. Mine has become, "I know, tonight, I'm the oldest person in this room." Anybody older?
You got competition, Rosary.
I'm old. We moved to West Orange four generations of my family. In 1963, we moved out of Newark. I think the riots were in 1967. Anyway, I'm the last one here tonight. I want to preface my comments, or I want to make comments before I ask questions, no, I ask questions first. I've heard seniors, the word bandied about tonight, an awful lot. All of a sudden, we have become an interest or people of interest. I don't know why or where, but all of a sudden, we're talking about seniors. Can somebody clarify for me? Senior housing, senior center, the differences between them, an active adult community and senior facility. I am a self-appointed, as a result of my age, and wanting to, well, actually die in West Orange. I'm an agent place. As I said, I'm the only one left. The four, the two duplex houses we built in 1963 are still there. I'm not there, I'm somewhere else in town. I need some clarification. What's going to happen to us? What are you going to do for us? And all of this different, this different terminology, what does it specifically mean? Where does it put us? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all to residents who made their feelings heard tonight about this extremely important topic and destiny for the township of West Orange. I will now open the floor to my council colleagues, and I will start with Councilman Kokrovjak.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to everybody who came tonight. We've now been here three and a half hours, and we'll be here a lot longer. But I really appreciate everybody coming and speaking at the mic. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Grossman by reading excerpts from the email that I sent him because I think that probably will do the best at answering his questions. Here's what I said. "Despite our requests, the mayor has not given us any information about his proposed 2019 operating and capital budgets for the township, yet he expects us to vote for his proposal anyway. By this time last year, the mayor had already sent the council an original and amended proposed budget. If we are indeed facing a difficult budget, we should know about it so that we can make a more informed judgment on where to focus our limited resources." In another part of the message, under the heading of debt, I wrote, "If this bond ordinance is approved, town debt will rise to nearly $92 million, a new record. This would mean since year-end 2010, right after Mayor Perici took office, we've added more than $32 million in debt. That's up 54% in less than a decade. That's concerning, of course, because taxpayers have to pay that back with interest." That's concerning, of course, because taxpayers have to pay that back with interest and interest rates have been rising. Over that same period, same time, excuse me, annual debt service, which is the payback of principal and interest, is up $2.4 million or 48%. The town chief financial officer is projecting that debt service will drop slightly in 2019, but increase significantly by $467,000 in 2020 and another $465,000 in 2021. That would mean since 2010, debt service would be up by more than $3 million or 62%. We still don't know what our 2019 budget, tax increase and capital budget looks like, but any capital budget will generate more debt and debt service. The council majority approved borrowing $9.2 million last year for capital projects. And while the mayor projects $4.8 million from Green Acres grants to pay part of the acquisition, this funding is not guaranteed as to either amount or timing. To answer Mr. Edwards' comment, in which I was talking about the proposed property that we would sell for development purposes, I was pointing that out in the context of, if this is supposed to be open space, if the whole rationale for doing this is open space, then why would we be projecting the sale of property more than two times the amount of annual property tax revenue that we need to replace what we'd be missing if either the county or developer purchased it? Obviously, if a developer purchased it, the property taxes are going to go way high. But the point I was making was not that we wouldn't be getting money, obviously we would, it's that, does that go to the heart of why we're doing this, which is, we're trying to preserve open space? If we're trying to preserve open space, why are we selling off land, you know, that we apparently don't need just to replace the property taxes? Mr. Edwards also asked about, you know, why should we be worried about debt? Because it's well within the state guidelines. I just threw out some of the numbers. The numbers that I read out to you, they scare me. They scare me for all of the people who can't afford to continue to pay the increasing property taxes that we have to pay here. We've had four straight years of the maximum 2% property tax increase. I would assume a lot of you people can handle that, but there are people in town who can't. And that's part of what I'm trying to keep in mind about this transaction. I really do appreciate everybody coming up and saying, you guys make a whole lot of good points. And in talking to some of the people, particularly the proponents, about these issues, I found myself saying a few times, "I'm sorry, I can't argue with you. You're making good points. This is a great opportunity for us, for, to increase our open space in the town if it's executed correctly." But I'm not just looking at what is the potential benefit of 138 acres minus whatever we sell off or wherever we put the Public Works facility, but, but I'm also thinking about the costs and the uncertainties and the risks. You all make very good points. I can't argue with you, but conversely, I'm looking at what the costs and what the uncertainties and the risks are. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney.
Joe just asked a lot of questions. One in particular was about why would we carve out any space? And Mr. Edwards mentioned before that with the, let me back up a minute because I want to just say thank you to everyone for coming out. And what I appreciate really is putting a name and a face to all of the emails that we received. So now to, to see you here and continue the overwhelming support that we received, I really do appreciate that. The talk about the intent, my intent as a councilperson and this priority vote is, the intention is to preserve as much as possible. On the site itself, when it was presented to us, the golf course is dissolved, we are losing $585,000 in tax revenue. So again, there is no plan. We are voting on a bond to move forward with the acquisition of this property, but there is no plan. One of the conceptual plans that was brought up was potentially selling off 10 or 15 acres to create a 55 and over community, which all of those circumstances that we just talked about mitigating the risk about infrastructure and housing and the impact on our school system would be lessened in such a community. So to make up for the $585,000, that's, that was the conceptual plan. If we vote on this tonight, we all come back together in, I don't know how many, open public meeting, meetings to develop a plan. If you don't like that plan, then we discuss something else. There are things that resonated with me tonight and one in particular, Leanne, you said, there's no going back. That was my first question. If this is not voted upon, we need a supermajority tonight, there's no going back, there's no recourse. We lose 138 acres. My colleague and I have, Councilwoman Kokoviac and I, sit on the West Essex Highlands. So West Essex Highlands for Mr. Applegate, having only been here for 16 weeks, welcome to West Orange. West Essex Highlands is 120 acres behind the West Essex Highlands up by Pleasantale Chateau. That property, I think my husband mentioned it before, that was never for sale. So we never had control over that, though we've tried through the Land Conservancy, Trust for Public Land, it was just never for sale. So Joe and I have been involved in mediation of West Essex Highlands now for, what did we figure out? For the past three years, though it's been in litigation for over 10 years. This is so different because this we can control. If we purchase this, we control it. We decide as a community what goes there. And the intent in all of the legislative history that we have on every ordinance that came out was, the intention is to preserve as much as possible. We do have to generate revenue because we do have to offset the loss. Again, we developed the plan to do that, if need be. One of the suggestions is, you're right about the venue. I thank Jane Brick for describing the setting or the rooftop restaurant. These are all outstanding ideas that can be presented, things that we can do because if we own it, we can plan that. And to have a private vendor, we heard at our last council meeting that the RFPs went out for a private vendor and there were 12 responses. So there is definitely interest nationwide on having a private vendor generate revenue there. So I just don't agree. I agree with the comment that was made that it's more of an asset versus that debt. And I'm going to leave the numbers to my colleague, Michelle Castellino, who has this argument with Joe all the time about our debt statement. I don't know. I thank Megan's son for coming out about walking his dog and if we want a dog park up there, then we get a dog park up there. You know, there's different things that can happen up there. Traffic, Millie Reed, we've exchanged emails, Mr. and Mrs. Reed, we've exchanged emails also about the traffic. We're very concerned with the traffic reports that did come out with 6,500 cars, unheard of numbers besides people cutting through to get there. So those are things that we, that have to be addressed. But again, we can only do that if we control, if we acquire the property and control the process. I wanted to thank Florence Bedvillas for promoting the township website. Any newcomer, I recognize a lot of faces here, so I know you're not newcomers, but please go to the website. All of this, all of these studies, all of these documents, since this was first presented to us, the mayor, the administration, I thank them also, they have provided us with bond council professionals, they've provided us with real estate appraisers, financial consultants. Who else is here? All the professionals that we need to do our due diligence and we appreciate that. And again, the financials that we're talking about, we, and I guarantee us, our CFO can confirm this, that in the first year of acquisition, there will be a 0% increase on our tax bill. And from there on, I don't, Joe didn't mention about Green Acres funding, but we are not applying this year for Green Acres funding because we don't have a plan. So once we develop a plan, then we can submit that to Green Acres. And he did say that 140 acres in the middle of Essex County is definitely something that the state would consider. The quality of life. I just, I thank you for your overwhelming support and I wholeheartedly am going to support this, this acquisition. As Joe Fagan said, our official historian, that history can be made right here tonight. Thank you.
With my, Council.
And to Rosary. Only because she's been to more council meetings than I have been and I've been on council now 16 years. You're talking about the number of generations or families that have been here. We commend you for that. And you want us to define either aging in place or community center or senior housing or affordable senior housing. You're asking for a definition. We can create that definition. If that's the direction that we go in, either at the library or here Essex Green or here at Rock Spring, we create that definition. We decide what our community needs and that's what we can put there and we can call it whatever we want. That was.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm going to go out of order. Councilman Kokoviac was going too, asked in his presentation and he'd like to make a final statement, so I'm allowing Councilman Kokoviac to make a statement. Councilman?
Sure, thank you. I've already touched, I had a little closing statement, I haven't had much time to write this up, but I just want to say this is among the most difficult votes I have made in more than eight years on the council. On the one hand, you know, the Rock Spring property holds the promise for substantial open space up to 138 acres, which everyone appears to agree would add significantly to the quality of life in town. And on the, but on the other hand, we face significant, significant costs. I've already touched on some of those. We face many uncertainties, including the timing and the amount of any Green Acres funding. We face other uncertainties that we haven't really touched on, whether it's going to be an 18-hole course, nine-hole course. And I just want to put this into context that I think it's important to keep this transaction in, in the context of our annual budget where we're also spending money, also raising taxes. I just missed, again, I probably am going to mispronounce or any mis- Dimas, Demas, apologize. You mentioned the recent garbage and recycling contract. Just to put that in context, it raised our annual cost for garbage and recycling, no change in service, by nearly $1.1 million. That was up 61% and it's the equivalent of a 2% property tax increase. So again, I think this would be a wonderful thing and maybe the alternative is, might be for the county because I understand it's still interested in the property and has basically stated that they want to keep everything open space. I appreciate all the many people who have reached out with their opinions and their questions and suggestions on both sides of the issue. I see strengths on both sides of the argument, but my concern about costs and risks and uncertainties and the potential negative consequences of this acquisition, I'm going to have to go with my mind and not my heart. And, no.
Council President, I have to jump on that because just talking about this garbage issue, our taxes were increased, and I mentioned this at the start when we were talking about council liaison appointments to the Environmental Commission, there have been changes to our laws. They, we, we did, we, I'm saying the Environmental Commission did an outstanding job and the administration, an outstanding job on getting people to recycle. Now the laws have changed and the rug is pulled out from under us and we don't have an end market. So laws have changed and that's part of the reason why we have an increase in this solid waste contract. So when we talk about going to the website, please go to Recycle Coach and get an understanding on that. I have to challenge the county buying it because Claire and Joe said the same thing. If the county were to purchase this, what's to say they don't turn around and sell it? We also will generate no revenue whatsoever if the county gets it and no matter what they do up there, we don't even get a permit. So all of that work, all those courtesy hearings that we have at the planning board, all of the work that they do at Turtleback Zoo. So no, I am totally disagreement about having the county purchase it. No offense to the zoo, but you know, they are doing a great job, but as far as, as far as our tax revenue, it doesn't help us very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Castellino.
I'm not ready yet.
Councilwoman Matute Brown.
Leanne, I hear you. I have to say, I, I've been here 19 years now and throughout this process, and some of you have been on this process with me, from the very first time, you know, there was a big uproar at town council, when I erroneously voted no because I thought that we could continue the discussion thereafter. Blame that on me being a freshman and not understanding the process properly, but I have to say that I am happy to have continued that conversation in many of your homes. Thank you for having me. I've been very busy with a lot of coffees, but I've, I've never been prouder to be a resident of this town than I have been throughout this process, listening to your voices, sharing in your passion and compassion and understanding, watching the advocacy that you have all taken on is just such an inspiring process to watch. And I do, Harvey, I didn't finish. I'm teasing, he can clap. As many of you know, and I do want to backtrack a little bit, I had reservations, A, because I am a freshman on the council, not understanding the process. I wanted to make sure that, the reason that I was elected, that I was going to make sure that I was keeping the integrity of process and local governance, transparency and accountability. I have since, the last time I said I would vote no because I didn't have a budget, I've met with the administration, I've met with John Gross, our Chief Financial Officer twice, Jack Sayers, Mr. Trank, our mayor, our bond counsel, our tax assessor, to understand exactly what the implications were going to be. Understand that there wasn't a time that I wanted to vote no, but I needed to understand the process and to make sure that my vote was going to be something that I could live with. I did ask the township to go back to the county and see if there were some conversations that they could have, only because I had those conversations with the county. When I understood that the county did not want to cooperate with respect to our loss of tax revenue, that to me was, you know, no longer a conversation that I believe we benefited from. So I do appreciate the mayor and Mr. Trank for going back and having that conversation. It was something that I wanted to make sure that we attempted to mitigate if we could, but after having those conversations, the county just wants to keep it as an 18-hole golf course and they run great golf courses, but that doesn't benefit our town, unfortunately. Having moved from there on, I have had conversations with John Gross. We have discussed the budget and while we are going to see challenges, and this was really when John and I had the discussion in his office, I was a little upset when I heard what was waiting for us in a couple of years' time with respect to tax implications outside of this. But I think John, during that conversation, to me, it became more evident that it was necessary for us to continue to make sure that we generated the taxes that we needed to so that it would help. to, so that it would help stave off the increases that we will see in a few years' time. I have come full circle. I, I, I've listened to everyone, and if I have not responded to your emails, please forgive me, it's, it's, I'm not gonna lie when I say countless emails. And it wasn't until I spoke to the mayor early last week, when I said, "I've taken so much time and responded to emails," he said, "It's okay to just generate one email, just let them all know that this is what you're doing." Because I was really trying to be creative in answering each one of you individually. So, take no offense to my general response, but it was one way that I could reach all of you, to let you know that I've been listening, I've been doing due diligence, and I am more excited about the process now that I've seen everyone organize themselves in a fashion that, that they have, that I trust that you will hold us accountable to what happens in development. I do believe that the 15 to 18 acres is something that, you know, if it's age restricted and, and developed responsibly, it's something that we need to help generate revenues for, for our budget. And that's really, that's really what it comes down to, fiscally, being responsible. And that's what I wanted to make sure that I was confident on, and, LeAnn, I'm watching you, you're making me nervous. I, I, I love your passion, I do, and, and all of you. Thank you so very much for helping me get to here, and, and again, I'll give credit where credit is due. While the budget was not presented to me, I have had conversations with the mayor. They are working on a two-year-out projection of the budget. There are some challenges. Union contracts are still waiting to be voted on, so they will be included. The state aid numbers have already come in. But again, stands the con, the budget, I, I, that can't be the holdup for me not to vote yes with this.
That's out of context, shouldn't be saying things like that.
Okay, now everybody's gonna be like mad rush hour.
It's not over yet. Not over yet. Councilwoman Castellino.
Okay.
No, you don't know, you don't, you don't know.
I'd like to commend my colleague for her honesty and her due diligence. I know we had quite a few conversations and, and debates over the subject matter. For me, growing up in the township, this was, I felt, and being an elect official for, I mean, the school board now, it's gotta be 13 years, one of the most important votes that I would have to cast, cuz it will change the complexion of the community. Most of you who don't know me for a long time, when I first got involved, what me, made me get involved within the township is back in the days when my children were at Redwood School. My, Redwood School, when my daughter started kindergarten, my daughter's now gonna be 29-years-old, which I can't believe, and when she was in kindergarten, there was 250 students in Redwood School. Redwood's located over by the manor on the other side off Willen Avenue. And by the time she left there in fifth grade, there was over 500 students within that timeframe, which was insane. So, that's where my advocacy began many years ago, advocating, we sit here in this beautiful Liberty Middle School, that was bought with a 40 mil, $40 million bond that we all advocated for. 30% of it was paid by the state. We not only just had Liberty about 15 years ago when that passed, but some other needed additions to the property from other developments that were approved from years prior to that. So, we were very fortunate at the time, creative thinking, and a few of my colleagues were on the, I believe the mayor was on the council, maybe Councilwoman McCartney at the time, where they were able to swap the property that we, that this is built on today, from the developer that has built behind Liberty on, known as Bel Air. So, a lot of creative, a lot of creativity needs to come into play when we're trying to preserve property and look at our community. You know, Mr. Malanga, you got up and you spoke, and I always appreciate your conversations, and Sally, you know, your open space advocates, but when Joe sat here and talked about the properties that we have purchased for open space, they were purchased with, you know, just to purchase them, not to have any kind of economics involved to trade off for the ta, loss of tax revenue. This is a creative purchase for us, it's, it's one of the larger purchases for us at $12 million, and I appreciate the mayor and the administration for working with us and being transparent to the community, and the honesty of how, you know, what could happen, what will happen. My, you know, I've stated my support from the first meeting, you know, 0% tax increase for 2019, $49 on this project moving forward, and that's, you know, and again, that's, I feel strong and confident that we will create revenue from the golf purchase of, of running it as a golf course. I'm glad you finally, my, I referred to in other meetings, my husband, I've referred to as, he's a golf advocate, and he travels all through the state, and I see where folks come to, to play on various courses. And I, I could vision the success. Also being involved in real estate, I really understand the value of this property and was excited. When I started, when I moved over to the council from the board three years ago, I kept asking the mayor about revenue opportunities. You see the county thrive, and this is our chance to, to thrive and have something viable for our community, but also we have the control of it. I believe just earlier this evening, there was a comment about the, and no offense, Anthony, the, the county with not seeing a, a plan from, from one of the, from the zoo, from the zoo. So, I mean, here we have the total control. The county also stated that they were gonna purchase this property for less than what the developer, from what the Rock Spring wanted it for. So, I just see all pluses here. Rosary, to your statements in regards to with senior housing, as far as the library was concerned, that came from the study, that we need more affordable housing options here in town for our seniors. And that was stated, maybe you weren't at the meeting when the mayor first proposed it, or came in about that plan a few months back, but it was stated and we've been talking about it, it's been dialogue that we've been working on. We want our seniors to stay here. My mom's down in Barnegat, I wanted her to stay up here in West Orange. Barnegat is overdeveloping like crazy. There's these multi-units going up there, so I think this is our chance, our opportunity to be very proactive, and we will be responsible. The one thing I would like to see from administration right away is that we plan to maybe look at Rock Spring Road and with Speed Humps possibly sooner than later. I think it's important at this time, someone here tonight mentioned sidewalks, and I feel so bad for her loss of a friend and that nature, and, you know, sidewalks are a little tougher, not just for the expense, but also to the property owner has to also give up part of their property for sidewalks. So, there's a little more to it than that, but I, I think Speed Humps we could look at because if this does open as a 18-hole golf course immediately, you know, again, that's gonna be traffic coming into the neighborhood immediately. I know things have quieted down there, but it's, it's traffic that you've seen in years past, but I, I, you know, hopefully we could work that out for our residents this year. So, I thank everyone who has emailed us, who has, Jerry and I went a-knocking a couple times on the weekends, and who you led us into your homes, met a lot of great new residents in town, and, and some folks that have been in town that I haven't met before, so it's always been a great opportunity. And I just appreciate the dialogue, and as we promised, there's gonna be future community meetings about this and the planning, and I think it's exciting and a great opportunity as we, years ago, we planned this beautiful auditorium here at Liberty Middle School that was done with public input and folks coming to the podium. So, keep coming, we love to have you, and I apologize if I missed an email or two, and I try to get back to all of you. So, thank you, folks, and Council President, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues. I first wanna thank everyone who came here tonight, who expressed their position, whether pro or con. It's a true system of democracy, it's showing the true feeling of this great community. I have never, in my entire time in the township of West Orange, as both a volunteer and as an elected official, seen so much energy and excitement and, and, and community involvement in such an important decision, something that's gonna take this township through the next decade, decade after that, decade after that. This is our destiny. The Township Council is giving this back to you. This is your destiny to control the development and the future development of the township of West Orange. I had the opportunity to speak with all the professionals, with the administration, Mr. Gross, Mr. Sayers. I got the information, I did my homework, and I realized that it's a risk that we have to take, and it's a risk that if we didn't take, we'd be kicking ourselves down the road for years and years and years to come. It's an important decision, it's something giving back to you, it's something to give to your children, your grandchildren, and your great-great children. Open space has always been important to me. My entire volunteer career in the township of West Orange was mountaintop league, always recreation, always finding fields and places to put fields, and having people be able to be in the outdoors. Such a great thing. This is such a great decision. The administration did its homework, my council colleagues, every one of us did our homework. Going back to one topic though, you're talking about sidewalks, Miss Myers, I have to tell you, that's why I created the pedestrian safety advisory board, to improve pedestrian safety, and I will guarantee you that my pedestrian safety advisory board will have a lot to say in egress and access to the Rock Spring Country Club property, to make it a safe environment, to guarantee that the properties and the roadways and the streets are safe for our children to play in their neighborhoods. And that is something I will guarantee you, something my board members will guarantee you. It's a great opportunity we're doing, and the reason why I brought up the sidewalks, when I was 14-years-old, I was running my bike in the street cuz there were no sidewalks, and I got hit by a car, and I almost lost both my legs. I was very fortunate. So, that's always stuck in the back of my head, that sidewalks are important. But, to my colleagues, I can't go on and on and repeat the things that all my colleagues have said. I just wanna say that to all of you, from the hundreds of emails that have gotten, to the number of people I speak on the shuttle every day, to my train buddies who I speak with every day, who said, "Jerry, you've got to do this," and they're right. And as an elected official, you have to look into your heart, and you have to say what you believe is right, but you also have to say what you believe the residents think is right, and you have to do it always in the best interest of the revenue, the residents of the township of West Orange. So, that's why I feel very positive to move forward with this purchase. Thank you. At, um, at this time, with everybody's permission, I would like, and Madam Clerk, if I'm allowed to, I would like to give the mayor, or anybody in the administration, an opportunity.
Thank you, Council President. I'm, I'm pretty sure everyone here is done, so, I just, only a few months ago, this wasn't even on any of our agenda, and a lot of people worked really hard to make this happen. I'd like to thank Mr. Gross, Mr. Sayers, Mr. Trank, Mr. Kizer, Mr. Dillons here, and all the professional staff who not only sat through this lengthy meeting tonight, have been working diligently for the last several months to make this possible. So, none of us ever know for sure what the future's gonna hold, but I'm pretty sure with the council's consideration, the community 20 years from now is gonna be grateful for this action. So, I appreciate all your hard work and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the vote, please?
I will.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2564-19?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kokoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carino?
Absolutely, yes. Now, now you're all allowed to stay for the rest of the meeting. So, don't leave us, I mean, thank you all, if you're staying, if you're leaving, please get home safely. Thank you, and please, we wanna hear from you going forward. This is not over yet, we wanna hear from you.
Yeah, don't check out.
So, keep us in a loop. Thank you all and good night. Madam Clerk, back to the consent agenda? Oh, let them get out for the other people.
You want people to-
I'm sorry? Let, let them, yeah, let the people get out. Shh.
Madam Clerk, do you want to advertise this according to the laws of the-
Yes, sir.
Then, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, sir.
Approval of minutes of previous meeting executive session February 19th and March 5th, 2019, and public meeting March 5th, 2019?
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Kokoviac?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to pull Resolution 99-19, it's the resolution adopting the recommendation of the planning board, and designated the West Orange Public Library property as an area in need of redevelopment. I also have several questions about, on some of the other agenda items.
May I ask your questions, Councilman?
Sure. I had sent a, a list of the, of questions to the administration and didn't get any back, but said I'd get them tonight, so I just wanted to first ask about Agenda Item B, it's Resolution 89-19, it's the resolution authorizing the township to enter into an agreement with Reliable Wood for the operation of the Township Recycling Center.
May I ask your question, please, Councilman?
Sure. I had wanted to know, what is the regulatory record of Reliable Wood, who's the proposed vendor, and any affiliates over the last three years, 2017, 2018, 2019, violations of federal, state, or municipal laws, ordinances, regulations, including fines and penalties?
So, the information available, according to our environmental compliance officer is, there's been three to four verifiable odor complaints with regard to the West Orange site. They, they also operate Bridgewater, and there's been no complaints according to the environmental compliance officer, no complaints with regard to Carney. A Sparta issue was satisfied, and in Cranbury, an issue of a permit was resolved. So, that is the information that was provided to me by Mr. DeFam.
So, do you know what the issue was in Sparta, at their Sparta's facility?
I can tell you, just let me put it up in my-
Thank you.
Just one second, sorry.
Next, next question, Councilman?
I think he's getting the information.
Yeah, I'm getting it for you, just one second, I'm going to Sparta tonight. Okay, okay, okay. Sparta, violation on not filing pre-construction permit for tub grinder and related equipment in 2016, satisfied.
Great, thank you. I, as part of the contract, there is a requirement for the vendor to provide additional asphalt surfacing, and I just wanted to get an idea of how big that, that surfacing is gonna be in terms of how much asphalt's required.
I see one of our interested members of the community, Mr. Lepore, he would be the only source of asphalt. So, why don't we skip as he's walking down the aisle and go to another question?
There were some, there was a provision in the contract that talks about that the, that the vendor could not exceed indicated limits of, I think, Class A and, Class B and Class C, and I just wondered how often and over what time period in the last three years had the vendor actually exceeded those?
So, as you're aware, under the current contract and under the proposed contract, there are spot inspections done, and there are photographs taken, and I distribute them from my office every time I get them. from my office every time I get them. So, Mr. DeFeo did not go through every single report for the last three years, and, but he did say there are times, for all these centers, that they do exceed, based upon weather, season, and other conditions. The amount may have been as much as 5,000 cubic yards from time to time. They are now in full compliance, without going through every inspection report, this cannot be answered. Definitively see the DEP inspection summary for further details.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the key issues of why this has been held up for months was this issue of what happens if the township, if I phrase it correctly, the township requires the facility to accept organic material in excess of what they feel like they should have to. And there seems to be a provision in there that allows them to charge for excess or excessive organic material. And it basically says, the contract says, the vendor can charge $15 a cubic yard for any excess over 276 cubic yards during an emergency period that has to be declared by government, up to the monthly rent in the period. And what I was trying to figure out is, what happens if the amount exceeds what the indicated, you know, 278 cubic yards would be in the time period? Doesn't, there doesn't seem to be a provision for what happens if there's another repeat of a superstorm, or that freak Halloween situation?
Well, as you see, the proposal is $4,167 a month, so...
Right, so I divided 15 by that amount, and so I was asking, what happens if it's, if the amount of volume is in excess of the monthly, the monthly rent? Do we pay them extra, or do they just suck it up?
Is that a legal term? The, so, the answer is, we provide... Hold on one second, I'm just looking at the verbiage.
Yes, this is, this is Section 3E.
Yeah, no, I was looking at DNE, because again, it's, no, but it does say, as you'll notice, Councilman, the very last line of E, but not to exceed the total rent during the 30-day period. So, it would never go, it would never go into a negative position. So, I don't...
So, they, so they would have to take, if we have excess over the 278 cubic yards, they'd have to take it, and they couldn't charge us?
Right. I think, though, there is a difference between subletter D and subletter E, because D is a FEMA, you know, where the president declares state of emergency. In those circumstances, we are able to seek FEMA reimbursement.
Right.
But, as you know, we have to pay for it first.
And then get, and hopefully get reimbursed. Yes.
Well, and hopefully we get reimbursed.
Yes.
Yes. So, I think we're seeing the same thing. I think the difference between D and E is, D is only, I'm sorry, E as an Edward is only where the governor declares it, D is where the president declares it.
Right, no, I understand that. I'm just saying, if we got more than 278 cubic yards in the governor's emergency period, do we have to pay extra for that, or do they just have to take however much we give them?
Correct. I'm agreeing with you.
Oh.
But if it was a president, a FEMA emergency, then it could go negative to us, because we have a source for reimbursement.
Right, so they would take everything that we could take under the FEMA declaration?
Either way, they'd take it all.
Yes.
No, please, either way, they'd take it all, but... Either way, they'd take it all. The question is, is do we have to write a check? And the time we write a check is if we're able, under FEMA, to seek federal reimbursement. We don't have to, quote, "write a check." We lose our rent that month if it's just a governor state of emergency.
Okay.
Because there is no reimbursement fund.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. I'm just going to skip around, it's late night. There is a provision in here about the, the vendor now has to, when it takes residential tires, auto vehicle tires, it can charge up to, I can't remember now, is it...
$5.
$5 a tire? Is that a change in policy?
Yes, currently, they're not allowed to charge. You're correct. Subletter F says they may charge residents for acceptance of tire at a rate not to exceed $5 per tire, for regular passenger tire. So, the reason this is important, most of us, when we get new tires, we pay the, you know, Mavis or whoever's replacing our tires, and they do the disposal.
Right.
So, there's always a disposal fee. And I think that this will provide a de minimis amount, so that no one's taking advantage of that.
Okay. So, residents should know if they're taking tires up there, they're going to have to pay from now on?
Correct.
Okay.
$5 a tire.
Again, I'm sorry, on Section 4, the early termination provision, I didn't really understand it, because it says the vendor can terminate the agreement under enumerated conditions, but some of the conditions appear to me to be the ones that would prompt the township to end the contracts.
So, again, we have rights, but what this is about is, that if they start to get fined at a rate that makes it not commercially reasonable to run it, they're, and you can see, it's if they're assessed and pay a fine in excess of $50,000. We have all of our rights, but what they're saying is, as you know, there can be, and again, there most likely going to be odor complaints, where they get assessed a regressive, or it tears up, and therefore, they would say, "We cannot afford to do it." We don't want them to ever be incentivized to do that. That's why it requires that they be operating in conformance with all of our requirements, meaning operating the odor control, giving us monthly reports and whatnot. But if, as a result of, again, fines that make it commercially unreasonable for them to run it, then they could, on 180-days' notice, give us a notice of intent to terminate the agreement.
Okay, so, again, I'm still a little confused. Let me just run past, it says 180-days prior notice of intent to terminate. Then, on the Item 4A, it says, "Reliable has been adjudicated as having violated the Air Pollution Control Act and the Regulations of the Department of Environmental Protection." So, if, if they get hit with that, then they could give notice to end the contract? It wouldn't be us forcing them to do it?
Well, again, we have our rights under the contract, but this is a situation where they would say it's no longer commercially viable. But it's not just A, as you can see, it's, it's all of these criteria. So, again, if in a three-year period, they will have had to have not just been adjudicated to be in violation of that act, but also have, have paid $50,000 in penalties. B, they will have had to have provided us with records of all incoming and outgoing Class B materials on a monthly basis, and they will have had to make reasonable and requisite efforts to avoid the violations.
Okay, okay. I understand that better, thank you. I'm sorry, I needed the clarification. Odor control, has anything changed with that?
Well, the answer is, we do intend, and this was part of our discussion, since, since, this is, we've been investigating, and I know Chief Abbott was here, he and I went out to East Hanover with the environmental compliance officer a year ago, and we've been trying to find the appropriate odor control system. Right now, they have what I'll call Water Buffalo, or a system of that nature, which...
Not a real water buffalo.
Right. But that requires that it be operated, and, you know, again, this is very subject to winds and whatnot. So, again, I believe that the course that Mr. Lepore and Mr. DeFeo are going to move towards is for the township to take control. We think that installing a more permanent odor control system, if we can find the right system, is the right way to go. And it'll be permanently the town, so it won't be the vendors. But they got to operate it. We're not going to, once we install it, they got to operate in conformance with...
So, we buy, we buy it, they install it?
No, I, I'll defer to Mr. Lepore, because I don't know how we've gotten that far. I don't know that we're going to let the vendor install it. We're going to let the vendor operate it, but we're going to either install it or manage the process, so that the seller, the vendor, installs it, so it is appropriately...
Yeah, that's correct. We'd purchase, we'd install, vendor would operate.
Okay, so we purchase, they operate?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. There was a question...
Are you still on the machine?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Lepore came down to answer a question.
Oh, the asphalt. How much asphalt do you have?
Yeah, it's a very minimal expansion of what's there. It's predominantly to restore the areas that get damaged through the operation of the site.
Okay. And, and part of the contract is that they got to move the Class B, which is the organic material that apparently gives off a lot of the odor.
Or can, yes.
I'm sorry?
It can, yes.
It can. And you're, this, the contract requires them to move that staging facility as far away from, I guess, residences as possible, is that what's...
That, that's correct.
Okay. I think that's an excellent idea, thank you.
You said you reported, you said you was going to jump around, but before you jump around, I had a question on this resolution as well. Okay, so, I was going to ask to make that a condition. When Councilwoman Castellino and I met them, met with them, they did talk about their Water Buffalo system, but we have a condition here that says, the operator will have this odor-neutralizing system at their disposal, control all odors, and such device shall be capable of operating in all weather conditions, including fog and rain. And we found out that it did not, at that time, have the capacity to do what it was supposed to do, and that there is some type of misting system that could be installed. So, that was one, to make it a condition that they put that in. And the other one, my other question, yes, is that these bids went out in October, this has been held up for six months now. I just wanted to make sure that they, what happens to the rent within those six months, because they still have been operating during that time?
No, excellent point, Councilwoman. One of the reasons we didn't bring it before the council tonight is, we wanted all the rent brought current, along with the escrow posted to the full amount. So, we are current, I don't know about March, but I know March is current. So, Mr. Gross has been all over this to make sure, so we are current on all monthly obligations by his vendor.
And so, why can't the condition be that they purchased the misting system?
Because I think that...
It's their operation?
The discussions, it's, it's going to end up being ours. And, and again, I think that the mayor's opinion, you know, the philosophy has been, hey, you know, this, this is a critical site in the town, and obviously, nobody hears about the odor complaints quicker or sooner than the mayor, the administration, and I'm sure the council people. So, we want to make sure we get the best system possible, recognizing that there's no perfect system, and the winds blow, and, you know, all kinds of stuff can happen, but... So...
You also want a Styrofoam recycling machine up there, too? Put that on there, left.
For Christmas?
There's such a thing, for Christmas, yes. For them. For this vendor.
Just to follow up on that, are you saying that during this interim period where the contract had expired, but they were working on a month-to-month, that they were delinquent on their, their rent and their escrow payments?
Well, I think the issue, no, well, escrow payments, as you know, ebb and flow, because Mr. DeFeo gets paid out of them. So, I, our goal is always to have it replenished to, I think it was $20,000, and with the implementation of his contract, if you approve it tonight, it will go to $25,000. The issue of the rent, where we had a legitimate issue, was, as you know, the bid is only now $4,167 a month. The, under the old contract, it was, Mr. Gross, help me?
About double that.
It was double that, okay, or more. But the net-net is, I took the position, based upon the mayor's direction, that until the new contract was implemented, they had to pay the higher rent. So, we got the money, or else we wouldn't present it to you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
On, did anybody else have any questions on the contract? Just, just very quickly, on Resolution 96 and 90...
Just one quick comment on the recycling center. So, I appreciate some of the changes. As Councilwoman said, we went up and walked the site a while back, but I'm glad to see in the contract that they're going to continue to conduct the daily inspections along Summit Street and the entrance of the driveway, because, as we know, when it doesn't blow in one direction across the street, it goes towards the back of the property. And with the Summit Ridge Nursing Home Facility being there, I think, I appreciate them going to, you know, to continue this. So, I'm glad it's in the contract. Thank you.
Is everybody done? I can move on?
Yeah, I'm good. Sorry, Councilman.
Okay, thank you. Really quick, just wanted to ask about the Resolution 96-19 and Resolution 97-19. There, there's a stipulation to dismissal of some pending tax appeals for Rock Spring Golf Course and for the Montclair Country Club. After this stipulation, is there any tax appeal that is pending from either of these two entities?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And that's all. That's all the questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Anyone else to pull a resolution? Councilwoman Castellino?
No.
No, Councilwoman Mityut Brown?
Um, hold on a minute, we do have a question.
One here.
You have a question, Councilwoman?
Yes, no, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, so, and these are all just questions. 88-19, where we're accepting the alternative support apparatus for the fire department. The only additional cost to the township is insurance, correct?
There may be some maintenance, you know...
But maintenance, yeah.
There may be maintenance that's required. We are attempting to find some sources, since this piece of equipment will not just be used by West Orange, but it'll be used by other towns if necessary. So, we're looking for a way from, like, through the county OEM to perhaps get some support for the maintenance. Either way, it's our, if, if the maintenance were to become burdensome from us, we can make a choice to give up the, give up the equipment.
That's how we're, that's how we're acquiring it, the transfer? So, we'd be able to transfer as well?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and to ensure the vehicle, is that part of already, is that an additional insurance cost to the township?
No, not really.
Is it just all one umbrella?
It's, it's, it goes into the, from the big part of the equation, but it's not like, like individually, we buy a policy on each car. That, that's not the way it works. They, they insure our entire fleet, so the addition of one more vehicle is not incrementally another $1,000, it just doesn't work.
Okay. And then, for 91-19, where we are entering into a settlement agreement to resolve the pending lawsuit with respect to the bid bond, were there any expenses, filing fees or otherwise, to settle this lawsuit? What are our attorney costs, if there were any?
Oh, absolutely there are. So...
Well, that's to settle.
Yeah, so let me just, it's excellent question. So, this is what, what happened here was, as I think you appreciate, the low bidder walked away. The low bidder, Ocean Clean, had put in a proposal of $42,994, and the second low bidder, excellent building, put in a bid that was $44,376. For what services is this? I don't even know what this is.
That's janitorial.
Janitorial.
Okay. Okay. So, net-net, the differential was $1,382 for two years, I believe, so about $2,700. Ocean Clean basically said they're out of business, refused, but that's why you get this bid bond. And, so we called a bid bond, and the bonding company refused to pay. And, so we had to sue, after we demanded the money. And we sued for eight grand, because we couldn't negotiate it out, and now it's being settled for four grand. So, basically, we're getting the differential, so the town's being made whole. I do not know what the end number was on legal fees. As you are aware, there is a, obviously incredibly low discounted rate on legal fees. So, Mr. Gross could certainly find out, because he's all on vouchers, so, and Mr. Moon from my office handles it. So, I'm sure we didn't get made totally whole, but we got made almost totally whole. You know, I'm sure, so we'll get back to 2,764, the differential, and I don't know if the legal fees are, that would leave $1,300 in legal fees, I don't know if they're $1,300 or a little less or a little more, but that's obtainable. obtainable.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if I have another one.
Anything else? I'm sorry, anything else?
Um, I don't know if that was asked already. Yes, I have a question on 98-19, which is authorizing the township to retain Thomas Screamville for special litigation with respect to the Rock Spring. Was this included in the pro forma under the soft costs?
So just so it's clear, this resolution will only be effective if someone commences litigation between now and the closing. The mayor's determination is, if anyone challenges the action of the council tonight, we will move as aggressively as possible to defeat that litigation so that it will not hold up the closing, which must occur, as you know, by August 30th, I'm sorry, by June 30th, excuse me. And if it occurs, what's not, the other benefit, if we can close this by April 30th, the town saved another $182,000 on this transaction. So Mr. Gross, in the pro forma, as I understand it, built in far more than this $10,000 in legal fees, because there has been far more than $10,000. So this is part of it. But of course, we'll save it all if we don't get sued, which we obviously do not expect to, nor will there be any merit to that.
So, so there's not a retainer on this? It's just if, in case we need them?
It's just in case.
Okay. Those are all the questions I had. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, please move the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Councilman Kokoviac, you pulled 99-19, resolution adopting the recommendation of the planning board and designated the West Orange Public Library property as an area in need of redevelopment, and authorizes the township to retain Hire Gruel to prepare and draft a redevelopment plan for the property.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Yes, thank you. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I think it's vitally important that the author of the redevelopment study comes to a council meeting and actually presents and answers questions from the council and from the public, because these redevelopment projects tend to be very important issues for the township. And this is the second time in a row that I've asked for the planner who authored the redevelopment study to come speak with the council and answer questions, and it hasn't happened. So what I wanted to do was twofold. One, I wanted to make a motion from the floor to say that we table this, table this motion until the planner is presented to us.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Now, a motion to table is non-debatable. If it's seconded, you have to vote on the motion to table first. So I, if there, I think you should, is, is there a second to motion to table that gets voted on first?
I'll second.
Okay. So it just, it's a strict roll call vote, either yes or no. If it's defeated, then you'll debate the main motion.
So, can we debate?
No. It's a, it's a non-debatable motion. It's a motion to table.
All right, so now we're voting.
The clerk calls a vote. Either vote yes, and if it carries, it'll be table till it's untabled.
Councilwoman Castellino?
No.
Council, Councilwoman Kokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
No.
Council President Garino?
No.
Main motion is now debated.
Okay, so to that point, Council President, may I?
Yes, Councilwoman.
The law that our colleague keeps referring to, the local redevelopment and housing law, specifies that we followed a plan, and the plan was that the planner was to come to the planning board. The planning board makes the recommendation, and then the council votes on it. So that was the public hearing. That's where the planner was available, according to the law that you keep citing and referring to. And again, the mayor said it before, when it suits your needs, you pick out certain excerpts. So we've already complied with the law. We've already had the public hearing. There was no reason for the planner to be here. We have the study in front of us, and you were at the meeting. Councilwoman Matute Brown was at the meeting, Jerry was at the meeting. So counts, the planning board voted unanimously that, that we met, the library met the criteria as outlined in that law that we keep referring to.
Mr. President, I just want to clarify one thing that was, I think, mentioned.
Yes, Mr. Treck.
I'm sorry. That was, so if you notice, and it's not in the resolution for your consideration tonight, this provision that was referenced by at least one member of the public, and I think at least one councilperson, the planning board recommendation, and unfortunately, these pages are not numbered, but the, the, I'm going to call it Romanet 2, that says, quote, "The Township Council consider expanding the study area to include additional properties in the same area either now or at some point in the future." That is not part of your resolution tonight. It would not be appropriate to be part, because it was not studied. So the only study that was recommended from the planning board was a study by Hire Gruel, which is the, obviously, the library. So when you vote to accept the, to consider accepting the recommendation of the planning board, you're considering, basically, Romanet 1, that you designate the study area. Because as you know, you have to do the study, and the planning board does that deliberative process. So if at some point in the future this council refers or whatnot, then that would be separate and could be considered at a different point, but not tonight. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Treck. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 99-dash-19?
Some.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kokoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is carried. We have a one ordinance on first reading. 2565-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Section 3.2 of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange Zone Map. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Any pending matters, new matters or council discussion?
No.
Any matters pending, colleagues?
Yeah.
Nope.
Dinner.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn, Madam Clerk?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Thank, thank you, West Orange. Thank you for being with us tonight. We'll see you at our next, our council meeting on April 9th. And also, add it to your calendar that April is Donate Life Month, so be, be tuned in. So, thank you. Have a good evening, West Orange, and good night.